It's now seven o'clock. I'll go through the agenda. At seven o'clock, we'll have community input. Please keep your comments to a couple of minutes if you have any. Seven oh five, we'll do the LEPC update, which I will do tonight since Chief Fisher can't make it this evening. Seven fifteen, discussion with the town accountant, and I see she's already on here. Hi, Priscilla. Seven thirty, discussion of approval process for town payroll and bill warrants. At eight o'clock, tech engineering presentation on the small bridge grant program. Eight thirty, finalizing the warrants for the special town meeting. And vote on the potential for reduced quorum. Nine thirty, appointments and resignations. Nine forty, the town administrators report. Nine fifty liaison reports, ten o'clock approval of minutes, and ten oh five adjournments. And as always, we may take things out of order if things run a little quicker than we hoped or expected, not always, never, never quicker than we hoped. And so we'll take that as it goes on. So let me now ask, is there any community input this evening? None seen. All right, I will go to the LEPC update. Chief Fisher sends his regrets not being able to be here tonight. He had some family issues that he's got to take care of. But the, I'll give a brief, there's not a whole lot new to report, but the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team continues to serve us extremely well. We're very, very grateful for the volunteers who take part in that, delivering meals, doing shopping, taking care of those who are gratefully spending their time socially distancing at home, and we appreciate that. It goes a long way toward keeping this community safe. CARES and FEMA money, that's apparently a moving target all the time. The town has received some funding from CARES. But I understand the next quarter's requests are due in. And we're hopefully that we will continue to get some support from the feds and the state to help us with our expenses having to do with COVID-19. As you know, the school opened this week. As far as we know, everything has been going very, very well. In fact, I stood by while a new kindergarten across the street, a new kindergartner stepped off the bus this afternoon, and that was fun to watch. With his backpack and his free lunch. They said, told me there was no free lunch, but apparently there is. I'm glad to see that. Very happy to see those kids doing well. And again, kudos to the entire school community for coming together, having a safe and productive opening on the hybrid model that'll run for a couple of weeks, and then go into phase two, and then hopefully phase three sometime in October to go to full-time return. But being very careful, a great deal of planning went into that. Just hard to believe how many hours were spent in making sure that our kids and our community are safe, and we do appreciate that. The town is still doing very, very well. If you'll notice on the COVID-19 map that the state puts out, we are one of the gray areas. It says we have fewer than five cases for 100,000 population. And that's because people are doing a very, very good job of wearing their masks, social distancing, being careful. And we appreciate that. Please don't let up now. We're looking at a very serious time coming up. As you may have heard today, cases are spiking across the country. We just went over 200,000 deaths today. And we want to keep that not happening here. And we are very grateful that the community has done a really, really good job of keeping us in the bottom end of the statistics, and we'll stay there. There will be a school committee meeting tomorrow night where I'm sure much of the school opening business will be handled. The Gleason Library is doing very well. They're opening on a slow basis, but there's a lot of interest in what they're doing. The specialized requests for book pickup are going very well. There's a lot of interest in that, and they're doing quite well. Big news is the senior flu clinic is scheduled for October 2nd. That the Board of Health is putting on with help from Emerson Home Care, or if it's Home Care, but Emerson Public Care somehow. There's a, they have 100 doses of flu vaccine, which hopefully we will get. That's the last time we met on yesterday morning. They still had not been received. It's, we're hoping that a minimum of 100 vaccine doses will be available. That will have to be confirmed as we get closer to the October 2nd date, but we've had more than 100 people register. And so there is a waiting list, which has now been shut down. So if you have not registered, hopefully there's planning going on in the hopes that if additional high-dose flu vaccine becomes available, there'll be a second senior flu vaccine drive-through available later on in the fall, and we can get people vaccinated. It's very important that we do that. That's going to be held at St. Irene's Church. They're still looking for some help from volunteers, so if you're willing to volunteer, please call the Board of Health office and agree to do that. But things are looking pretty good for that, and a great, great response from the community in terms of getting that. Also from the Board of Health, the Benfield Farm septic system has failed. It's going to have to be redone, and that's something to look forward to for the fall. The fire department's doing well. They're extremely busy. They've got new hires, especially at the EMT and the fire department side. So they're training people as well as they can, given the requirements for social distancing. It's very hard to do fire department training when you have to stay apart from each other. But Chief Saros is doing a great job of getting everybody up to speed on that. The COA is very, very active. All the dancing, the exercise classes, the hair cutting at the fire station are fully subscribed. Concerts are going on. They're just doing a terrific job of keeping people actively involved and giving them something to do during our way to stay at home. But they're doing a really, really terrific job, and special thanks to the fire department for opening the firehouse to allow those events to happen. They'll also be beginning to hold some events at FRS at Union Hall as time permits and as the space becomes available. As you know, the paving in the center of town has been completed. They still have to stripe it. That will be done at night sometime probably this coming week. And that will be, the complete streets will have pretty well been put to bed. And they did a nice job on that. It was good. Let's see what else I've got here.
Alan, the cheer committee and the
Yes, good. I got that on a separate sheet of paper. Yeah, the LEPC has been looking at planning for Halloween. Clearly, that's an important event in this town. And essentially, we have asked the cheer committee, which has done such a tremendous job of orchestrating other events in the summer in town, and they have agreed to take on the event planning for Halloween. It's well underway. We have a basics of a plan that's put out, and Barney, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. And as we're talking here, the Board of Health, I think, is considering the plan at their meeting tonight. Basically, I'll be brief, but the basic idea is that you know, normally we would have six to 800 people coming through the center of town and trick-or-treating there. And that is not going to work in terms of maintaining, you know, social distance and keeping everyone safe. So with the help of the very active Town Center Halloween group, the, the plan that we're looking at is to go back to kind of a more traditional neighborhood trick-or-treating and identify neighborhoods that are lend themselves to that kind of, you know, going door to door and recruit different neighborhoods and recruit a couple of volunteers in that neighborhood to organize their neighborhood to provide trick-or-treating for people in the neighborhood or people that may sign up to go to that neighborhood. And the idea would be that we'll have a list of precautions, and it'll be a little different in that people will not, kids will not be invited to go up actually under the porch and knock on somebody's door. More that it'll be street-side. And that we'll, we'll figure out a way to be very careful in terms of kids getting candy and not a lot of, you know, contact with others in the process of picking out their candy. And luckily, Halloween is on a Saturday this year, so we're thinking that it would be have it in the afternoon going up until sunset and looking at the possibility of scheduling different age groups at different times. So starting with the younger kids sort of early afternoon, and then older kids mid-afternoon, and then the oldest kids late afternoon. So that it's all mostly done during daylight hours. So more to come on that, but the, it, there's a lot of interest in trying to make this happen in neighborhoods to allow kids to enjoy this. You know, probably one of the favorite events of the year for most children and to do it in such a way that, that we can continue to keep the community safe.
And is there going to be a, is a central point for the community to contribute candy and things for?
Thank you, Alan. That's a good question. Yes. Matt has agreed to continue to collect candy at ferns as he has done in the past. And, you know, once we get the go-ahead from the Board of Health tonight, we will start publicizing and put that word out. And as soon as we have finished recruiting the kind of neighborhoods that want to participate in an organizer for the neighborhood, the Town Center Group has volunteered to put together a signup schedule, like use a signup genius, and people would actually be asked to go into that and indicate the neighborhood where they'd like to trick-or-treat and the timeframe that they'd like trick-or-treat. So we, we know some people will not do that, and they'll, they'll go trick-or-treating anyway. But anyway, the goal is to get help with, with candy by collections, by having ferns collected as usual, and hopefully encourage people to contribute even more than they might otherwise to help spread it around the neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's, you know, this is, that's a big holiday in this town for the kids. We're trying to keep it alive. We're hoping that the state will allow all that to happen and not shut down Halloween in general. But we think we're well on the way to having a safe and productive Halloween and a lot of fun for the children. It's a big event, and we appreciate, especially appreciate the cheer committee stepping up to coordinate that for us. And it's, it's a great relief, and we put the, the event in the hands of the experts who've done so many other good things so far this year. So we do appreciate it. Thank you, Barney. The one other last thing is planning continues for town meeting. We still are anticipating it will be held at the plaza at the school. We thought about perhaps holding it under the canopy of the new solar cells. But if it rains, it turns out there are spaces between all those cells, and you have to be seated pretty carefully not to get dripped on. So we're, we're assuming the weather is going to be wonderful. Kate Reed has assured us that it will not be as warm as it was for the Springtown Meeting, and we have a productive town meeting and be able to finalize fiscal 21 planning. So look forward to that. That will be October 17th. That's a Saturday at 10 o'clock in the morning. And by the way, in-person voting starts that afternoon, so that's a good thing to keep in mind as well. Don't forget to vote this year. Okay, it is now 7:15, a little, yep, exactly 7:15, and we have on the agenda now the discussion with the town accountant. And Priscilla, I see you're there. Good evening.
Hi, Alan. Thank you. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
A little nervous tonight. I'm, I'm here just to let you know that I have decided to retire, and I, I want to give the town ample notice of that. Where's Luke? My retirement date is a year from yesterday, so 9/21/21 is my shooting date, and I want to be upfront and give you a year's notice, so.
Thank you so much, and people should know that, you know, this has been a very, very difficult year, and Priscilla has just really pitched in and kept this town above water.
Very difficult. Was it two or three years, right?
Yeah.
This was just the straw.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, you will not be able to be replaced. We will probably have to hire four people, but thank you so much, and also thank you for the, for the nice lead time you're giving us to do that. Your work is certainly greatly appreciated. We are in your debt, and we don't like to use that word when we talk with the accountant, but it's it's something that you've just been a real pleasure to work with, and it will, we're not, we're not done yet. We still have a number of months to go. And we'll look forward to working with you well into 2021. So thank you so much. David, go ahead.
So I just want to say that you can talk about a bad three years, but I met Priscilla when I was the FinCom Chair, or prior to that, 2008, nine, 10. And she was an incredibly trusted resource and friend, and I'm very glad that you're retiring from your personal benefit, but I'm going to miss you a lot. Thank you for all your service.
And Luke didn't, I'm not sure he heard, so. You're muted.
He's smiling.
I got up to get food, and what? Did you just retire?
Luke, I'm retiring, but I'm giving a year notice.
What, a five-year notice?
No, no, that's what Tim said. That's not what I said.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, as a former colleague of mine once said, when I said, I hear you're retiring, he said, no, sir. He says, retiring's when you've got something to live on. I'm quitting.
Well, and, you know, Prizza will, you know, we've already, you know, thought about how we can draw on your, you know, experience and wisdom to help us as we go forward, you know, in finding another, someone to take this position. But we also really want to, you know, have the opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate all that you have provided to the town. I mean, just such a, you know, a real rock, so.
Yeah, well, I'm not letting her off the hook. She is a town president. Soon as she retires, we're finding a committee for her.
Commandant's committee.
That's what she's looking for. Absolutely.
Hey, Priscilla, I'm one of those retired people with nothing to do and not enough time to do it.
Right. I don't, I don't think that's going to happen, Kate, for a while.
And thank you so much. Really, we do appreciate it. All right.
We're going to miss you. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't get to say anything. No, but I mean, yeah, it's been a good, thank you for giving us the year. I mean, I don't know, we didn't have it. The year we're still going to be like, oh, my God, that was the fastest 12 months ever. You know, it's been, been
It's hard to hear you, Luke.
You're cutting it out.
I could.
I, no.
No?
It's, it's like you have a directional mic and
When you turn your face to the left, you come in much better.
Yeah.
The other left.
Yeah. I wonder, but that's weird. I don't know. It must be my computer. Is this better? Way close? No, it's just, it's been an incredible pleasure working with you. I mean, you know, always ahead of everybody. You know, I'm predicting things that are going to come three, six, 12 months down the road. I don't know what I'm going to do without you for CPC. But no, I mean, you know, it's, thank you for giving us the year. I don't know if you heard that piece, but, but that's huge, because I don't know what we'd do if it happened. It's going to be scrambling. We, I'm to reach.
See your lips moving, but
You're up and down big time.
Maybe if you go on your phone.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Luke, and thank you, Priscilla. We appreciate it. Yeah. All right. Discussion of the process for the payroll, while interestingly, it was still here. We've been discussing within the board the procedure we do for when we get the town warrants, the couple of times a week, couple of times a month, we get large sheets of financial information and are asked to sign off on it. It turns out all five of us don't need to do that, that we really can designate a single person to review those bills and sign for the board. And so I'd like to open that for discussion, see what the feelings of the board are in making that change.
Well, I personally am in favor of that change, especially if the person who is the designee actually looks at the bills, because when they used to be brought every couple of weeks to our desk, when we were meeting in person, everybody signed them. Nobody had any idea what was in them. The year I was chair, I didn't do it as often as I wanted to, but Priscilla and I met from time to time, and she would tell me, well, the big ones are these, and this is why, you know, they're here and there, you know. So I actually learned some things. And of course, COVID struck, so there, you know, that went out the window, but so I just think it would be nice if whomever did the the signing off actually knew what they were signing. We had the commitment from the person who was going to, either they're going to be volunteering or the chair will do it, that we have a commitment that that will actually get done.
A few years ago, there was a new law that said that this, the boards could designate one or two people to do this. And the selectmen voted at that time to do that, but also just voted only in an emergency. So that's, that's why we're, we're still having everybody sign, and the bills are always available to anyone. They've always been always available to anyone. But whatever you decide.
David.
David, you're muted.
Sorry. So, yeah, I'm glad to hear that. The law allows for that. I brought that up to Alan and Tim a few days ago. And what we, what we did at school committee, which worked well for us, I think, was rotate in, you know, a member, usually a newer member to learn, you know, it's a great way to learn the budget, right, to review the bills. You actually see what's going on. Get a chance to ask questions, and then if you rotate that through the board over a period of years, you know, people are knowledgeable, but the detail of, you know, actually approving it just falls to the one person who then can report that he or she has reviewed them. So I found it, I found it a great way to learn, you know, sort of budgeting and develop a relationship with the accountant. So I think that's a good practice, and I also think, as Kate mentioned, if, if it's everybody's job, it's nobody's job, right? And if it's one person's job, they're going to take that seriously. So the one difficulty in the COVID era, I think, you mentioned Kate dropping it off on somebody's desk, when, when all the backup is there, and you can look at the physical bill and see the details, you might pick up something that you didn't know and ask a question about, well, why is this minimum charge here, you know, why is this blah, blah, blah? And the way it's done now, you know, we don't have that level of detail, and I don't know that we want to burden the office staff to scan all those sheets. So I think if whoever does it should probably plan on dropping by Town Hall, you know, once a week or once every other week, and just actually physically looking at the bills, because it's more efficient.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree. I mean, I do go over the, the warrants when they, when they come in, but frankly, there's not a lot of detail in those. They're done. It's kind of a summary of what goes on, and I think the idea of having somebody, even if, you know, maybe for a fixed amount of time and then share it across the, the board over time is a good way to do that. And so I guess I would propose that, in fact, we authorize a single member to sign on behalf of the board with, under the understanding that that individual would go in on a, on a periodic basis and review the bills prior to signing the warrant. Further discussion?
Alan, it might be good to, to do two, just in case that one person can't do it.
I was going to suggest that, too, have an alternate, and then usually the main person doing it, they're going on vacation, can't be there.
Good idea.
So you're not flipping back and forth all the time.
At one point, we tried to get around it and say the chair and vice chair, and we, Priscilla told us, no, you can't do that. It has to be the name of a specific
The municipal organization bill, you have to, and any, it can be for any committee or department or commission to designate that, but it has to be voted on, and you should put a single name, and you can do an alternate, but then the accountant should be advised that, you know, by the signee that the alternate will be doing that week due to an illness or a travel or something like that. Not to burden Priscilla, but there is also, it would be doing another warrant, but lots of times you're not necessarily concerned as much about like electric bills or office supplies, is if you did have any capital projects coming up or any major bills, is doing a, you know, doing two warrants and a smaller warrant with, with bills that you may feel are more appropriate. I did that with mine. I did capital projects or anything separately so that said, these are standard things are every month, and this is the warrant you really need to kind of look at and acclimate yourself to. Not to put anything more on you, Priscilla, but
Putting something more on me.
Actually, I found it easier to close out a warrant that was a capital in that, but that's just, that's, that's, that's going down a different path. Or flagging certain ones that maybe would be, you know, with a, with a sticky of saying, you know, these are the major, you know, when you get a huge stack to have them look through.
Well, I'm sure that'll be a learning process, and we can, we can evolve that as it goes. So when we first, just if somebody would make a motion, we can then move forward. With the motion simply to, so we can have a designated and alternate authorized to sign the warrants for expenditures.
Right.
Okay, Luke, second.
One second.
Okay, David. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye?
Mo, aye.
Reed, aye.
Good. And I believe we may have a volunteer for the initial designee. Maybe not.
We all heard David.
I'm happy to do it if you want. I mean, I could do it, too. I'm right around the corner.
Barney's in town.
All right.
Happy to defer to Barney. I could back up.
So you, Barney is the primary and David is alternate? All agree? All right, very good. Thank you.
So, Priscilla, you'll just let me know then, and I can plan to come in, right?
Perfect.
It's what we're doing now. Okay.
There's one other little part of the law is that something has to be set at the next meeting, at the next selectman's meeting, so it'll be like something that will be added to the agenda, you know, these, these warrants are signed and for how much and that. So there's a little more that has to be done there.
Thank you. All righty.
I'm going.
All right.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Come back.
You're not going very far, though. Not yet.
You're not going very far though. Not yet.
And not for very long.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we're ahead of schedule. Uh, is tech engineering here?
The, well, I see Mike Myers is here.
Yes, we're here.
They are here.
All right. Would you, if you'd like to go ahead, you may do so.
Okay. And then, uh, Bob Nicolai should be on the call here too.
He is.
Yep, there he is. Okay. Well, um, thank you. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I think, um, you know, my name's Mike Myers. I'm one of the principals over at T E C. Uh, on the call here too is, uh, Bob Nicolai. Bob is the director of our, uh, structural engineering group. Um, first and foremost, just want to say congratulations. Uh, anytime the state gives you some money to fix a couple of bridges, that's, uh, always good news and, and reason to celebrate. Um, it's been over two years now since, uh, T E C and, uh, the town worked together on this application. Uh, so what we wanted to do was just do a very high level, uh, brief couple of slides, uh, talk a little bit about us, a little bit about the program and talk a little bit about your project. Uh, go to the next slide. Just a little bit, um, briefly about T E C. We're about 50 people spread out over three offices. Um, when we were started about 20 years ago, uh, we had a vision to be essentially a structural engineering company just working on bridges. Um, and that, that's changed. You know, those were our roots, but we've evolved and, and now we do, uh, other service areas such as transportation, uh, civil site and construction. Uh, part of our success has really been working with communities like Carlisle, uh, to help them with their grant programs. Um, and we've been fortunate to, to work with Carlisle on a few grant programs now, uh, both complete streets and small bridge, uh, were very successful. Uh, Mass Works, we didn't, didn't get that one the first time, but maybe there'll be a, a chance later on. Uh, next slide, Bob. So basically what we've done is taken our municipal focus and our structural background, our structural experience, um, to couple that and help communities with the small bridge program. Uh, we are, uh, basically Mass DOT has consultants like us and others to get pre-qualified for different, um, areas of expertise. And we do have the highest rating, uh, complex bridge design and rating, um, with Mass DOT. Um, although this is definitely not, your project is certainly not a complex project by any means. Uh, so with that, we've assisted about 15 communities. Um, pictured here is a project in Norwood that's currently under construction now. And another project, uh, over at the Saugus Wakefield Town Line, uh, bottom right is the before and then, uh, above is a, a picture of the constructed bridge. Um, next slide. What I'll do now is turn it over to Bob and let Bob just kind of give you a, um, a little overview on your project.
Bob is, Bob is muted.
Oh, Bob, you're muted.
There we go.
Sorry. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. I was unmuted on the phone, but not on the computer. Um, so anyway, as I was saying, uh, what's interesting about Carlisle and the small bridge grant, uh, for Carlisle is it's actually approved for two separate bridges. So you're getting more bang for your buck, um, getting two bridges repaired. Uh, so just to start with the Maple Street over the Page Brook, uh, just looking right at the, the first photo there, the first thing I see is traffic safety features. Um, the approaches we call leading up to the bridge, um, no guard rail on those approaches. You can see what we call blunt ends in the, uh, the foreground there. That's just something that poses a risk to vehicles, uh, possibly hitting it. Um, these traffic safety features that are shown here actually don't meet, you know, Mass DOT's, uh, crash testing requirements. So one thing that the small bridge program does focus on is upgrading traffic safety features along bridges to bring them up to, uh, more current Mast dot codes. Uh, so you can see the, the need here at this location. Um, since it is, you know, Mast dot grant program, uh, we do have to meet, you know, Mast dot standards. So this is the Maple Street project. What we would do here is replace that rail on top of the, uh, on top of the concrete curb there, uh, insert, uh, precast concrete guard rail transitions at each corner of the bridge and taper in, you know, new guard rail leading up to the, the bridge from the approaches. talking a little bit more, let me, there we go. Uh, you can see here too, the, uh, the previous Mast dot inspection rating gave all the transitions and approach rails a two. Uh, and two, they consider is, is critical, uh, something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. So that's Maple Street, kind of the same, same situation here at Curve Street. Uh, again, the, uh, they, they even rated the transitions and approach guard rail as, as non-existent. Um, so here too would be a similar situation. We would try to, um, unfortunately that timber guard rail there doesn't meet Mast dot, uh, requirements. So we'd be upgrading that to new, uh, bridge rail and new approaches, uh, approach guard rail. Uh, so these are the cost estimates of the construction. Uh, it's important to note that these are, uh, not covered with this grant. The grant that we have now will cover design, uh, and all the pre-design work we need to do. Uh, these construction funds are earmarked, are going to be earmarked for future state funding. Uh, the small bridge program is coming to an end, so Mast DOT wanted to get to exhaust the funds in that program. Uh, we expect it to be re-upped. So once it re-ups, we'll, uh, work with the town of Carlisle again to apply for that next round of funding, whenever that comes up. Uh, by having the bridge designed using small bridge grant funds, you have a much, you're moved kind of to the front of the line when it comes to construction costs. Mast DOT likes to see a project through from design to construction. Uh, this just gives an outline, you know, of the, of the upcoming schedule of the project. Uh, by the time we get, um, you know, the contract between the town and the state goes through all the signatures that are required, all the processes, it'll probably be around, uh, first of November, uh, before we really get going. Uh, we'll, we'll start design in winter, in this winter. Um, with the Mast dot small bridge program, we have to submit 25% plans to Mast DOT for approval. So we'll do that. Um, it's required to do that within six months of NTP, but for a project of this size, we don't see that taking that long. Uh, and then we'll be finishing up, uh, final design in spring of summer, uh, next summer, um, after we have a vaccine and everyone's back to normal. Uh, summer 20, if, if this schedule holds up and we're able to, um, get the funding through the next round of the Mast dot, uh, small bridge program, uh, then construction would start in fall of 2021. Uh, for a project this size, we're anticipating about a 60-day construction timeline, but we'll know more about that once we start getting into our design work. Um, so the next step here is just submitting what's called the pre-contract information over to Mast DOT. Uh, Mike and I will be sending that on over to the town, uh, shortly after this. Uh, and just to give an, sorry, what's that?
Go ahead. No, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Uh, just to give a, an example of a project we've done in the past, uh, this is what we did in Hubbardston. Uh, this is actually kind of very unique and tailored to what Carlisle has going on. The, the Hubbardston one was actually two projects as well, uh, Ragged Hill Road and Williamsville Road. So we do have that experience, you know, trying to, uh, work two projects simultaneously, but just, uh, for example purposes here, this is only Ragged Hill Road. Uh, you can see the, the before picture over to the left, uh, no real approach, uh, traffic safety features. And on the bridge, they got a little bit creative with an old signpost, uh, that was serving as their top rail. And then after our project, you can see, uh, over there to the right, the new, uh, concrete curb, uh, the curb, uh, granite curb transitions and the new, uh, traffic safety feature, uh, guard rail. So that's just an example, uh, project of one we've done in the past. That finished up about six months ago. Um, so with that, we'll open it up to any questions that, um, anybody may have.
Do you have an estimate of what's the design, uh, contract amount would be?
Uh, we did send that in.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, eighty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Design.
Um, is, uh, if you go back one slide, uh, is there any possibility that, um, in the design you would, could, uh, specify something like quartet or something instead of the shiny, um, galvanized stuff? Because for Carlisle, I think we'd rather have something a little more rustic.
Yep.
Looking.
You can do that over the bridge, right? The, the rustic, um, you're talking like the rusted look?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I, I'm assuming.
That's something we can, we could work into the design. I think that's something we can look at once we get closer.
So it doesn't look like Route 128, you know?
Right.
Um, I have a question about the Maple Street, um, project. If you want to go back to that, yeah. Um, so it just happens that I, I walk that a lot. And, um, so I can see, you know, you can see the, where the, the bridge, uh, concrete railing is now. And then just beyond it on the left, you know, where the, those, I think those are granite posts, but how they're sort of sinking off the edge of the road. Cause that side of the road is kind of, um, disintegrating. So does your project include, um, trying to deal with that?
To an extent, uh, we're not going to put in a, a new wall there or anything that major. But what we would do is put in, uh, what's called pavement milling mulch underneath the guard rail. And that serves to kind of stabilize the slope a little bit as well.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look to propose any new traffic safety without addressing the issues below as far as grading.
Yeah.
To make sure that, um, everything is, is constructed to code and, and it's structurally there.
Yeah. So even though the part I'm talking about is not actually the bridge itself, but it's on the, you know, it's the approach to the bridge. That, that.
We would, yeah, we would look at the approaches as well as part of our design. Yep.
All right. Great.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yep. Go ahead, David.
Okay. Um, so do I understand this correctly? Is it $260,000 basically to put guardrails on a bridge?
Uh, yeah, it may seem a little expensive, uh, but, uh, a, a good portion of it is the transition pieces. And right now, since we're not into final design yet, uh, the cost estimate is probably a little bit high because we try to kind of capture everything that could possibly happen. Uh, but like, um, like I mentioned before, that would be cost that would be covered by the future, uh, grant from the state.
Well, you know, grant or no grant, money's money. So did we, are you guys the design? Are you recommending? And then we have a design bid and then we have a construction bid? Or are you both the recommending and the design part?
Uh, we would do the design and then we would put it out to bid for contractors.
Did, did we competitively bid this design part?
I think that's a question for Tim.
We did not. Engineering services are not exempt from the 32B. And the tech engineering, they applied, uh, for this grant for the town. Also, they applied for the initial complete streets grant, which was successful. So we had been working with them, uh, on that. And it's not a competitively bid, um, service.
Yeah, I don't have all the history and I'm a new, for Mike's benefit, I'm, I'm a new selected member, so I don't have a history on this. But it just seems like an overreach. You know what I mean? It just sounds, it doesn't play well, right? Quarter million dollars to replace guardrails just doesn't sound like a leading, uh, you know, thing we want on the cover of the mosquito. So that's one question. Separately, as long as we're into this, are we, are we in some kind of comprehensive analysis of the structural quality of all the bridges in Carlisle?
Not all of the bridges. And these two are really just looking at the traffic safety features over the bridge.
But how do we know what's going on underneath the tart, underneath the macadam? You know, what's the concrete look like? What's?
Uh, we do have the inspection reports from the, the bridge structures and the, the load carrying abilities of the structures is not in any sort of risk right now.
Who, who did that, Bob?
Uh, Mast DOT did. Mast DOT did the bridge inspection.
So, um, did that, is that a company or a person? I'm sorry.
Uh, Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Okay. So they've done a survey and they've concluded we don't have any layering structural issues?
At these two locations, no.
What about the other, you know, 50 bridges we have?
I haven't had a chance to take a look at those inspection reports.
Okay, but they do inspect. Again, I don't know any of this. Do they inspect regularly? Bridges get inspected by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Every two years.
Okay. So we assume that things are okay. Did they flag these guardrail issues or did we self-flag them?
Uh, a little bit of both. But yes, they do flag them. You can see that, uh, what's circled on the page.
Yeah.
That's from the Mast DOT inspection report.
Okay.
Uh, S A signifies a deficiency that is.
Right.
Uh, what do they call it? Severe and, uh, urgency of repairs ASAP.
Okay. All right. So we have an external government source that's identified. This is a critical issue. We contracted a group that we know and trust, and you've come back with a recommendation. So that's all fine. I guess I have a little bit of an issue with then you guys doing the design of the repair. And I don't know you guys for Adam, you know, I don't know anything about you guys, but I'm just saying optically, you guys did the reporting, you know, hey, the DOT flagged this, we took a look at it, this is what it needs. Oh, by the way, we're the best guys to design this. I, that just doesn't seem right to me. Like we ought to then probably bid that piece. And I'm just giving you a, you know, it's just a knee jerk reaction to the optics of it. Uh, Tim, do you want to comment on that?
Just as, as I said, it's an exempt service under 32B.
Just because it's exempt, Tim, just because it's exempt doesn't mean it optically plays well.
Well, what, what, uh, part two of what I was going to say is that doesn't mean that we, we are prohibited from, you know, seeking competitive quotes. It just means we do not have to.
Right.
So they were saying the same thing. Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah. And, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead. No, Luke, I'm done.
No, I was just going to say, so it's, it's very similar to complete streets, right? So at, at the end of the day, um, you know, tech didn't get the complete streets piece. It went to niche, right? So, so that piece went out to bid and then, excuse me, um, you know, niche came in, uh, at, at a better price. But also too, you know, when they did the review, you know, they said, yeah, you know, the, the work that tech had done was, was up to snuff, right? So it does, it, it would get checked again, right? Um, you know, just my, I guess, so a couple of questions. So the 85, was that similar to the complete streets where that, the 35 was paid for an initial grant that, that they had put together? Um, I think that's what you said, but, but I may have missed that. The, the 85 is already set by a, a grant that's already been awarded, right? Yes. Looks like Tim's nodding.
Right.
Okay. And then, and then it'll go out to bid. So, so I guess my only other concern is like with complete streets, right? The, you know, the estimate or the amount we got from complete streets was 250,000. The estimate for, you know, not necessarily. you know, not necessarily significantly higher than that, than it came in almost up, right? So, so that is something that we have to be, you know, considerate of and, and, you know, as we, as we point out these flaws, right, these issues, um, you know, do we set ourselves up where we have to do it? I mean, there, obviously, I think everybody agrees it's stuff that needs to be done, right? But are we, by pointing out these issues, are we saying, okay, now we have to do it in a year or two years or, or, you know, if, if, you know, because I, I think, excuse me, my, my point kind of is that, you know, if it is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right, and the state comes back and says, you know, the estimate is a hundred and eighty thousand, right, we've got to make up a seventy thousand dollar difference, it's going to be tough for us right now. Um, you know, do we get, and I guess this is more of a, a question for, for, um, for Mike and Bob, I think it was Bob, right, Bob? Um, do we get a second bite at the apple with going back for funds, right, after it's already bid? Um, you know, can we say, look at, you know, the state estimated it would be a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand, but it actually came in at two fifty, right? So we, we want that additional, we're asking for that additional seventy. Um, can we, we could do that?
Yes, so right now, the hundred thousand dollar, and I apologize, Mike, uh, actually somehow got bumped out of the, uh, out of the meeting. I don't know if something was going on with his internet or what. But, um, the hundred thousand dollar grant was purely just for design.
Right.
So that's what Mass DOT thought it would cost, was a hundred thousand dollars. We came in a little bit below that.
Um, yeah.
Uh, but you, you're right, I'm getting to what, uh, sorry, I've, I've taken a
No, that's good.
Circuits route to get there, but, um, yeah, this is, yep, this is only for design services right now. Uh, those estimates we put in, uh, we put in when we do this sort of thing, when we apply for grants, we do kind of bump those up a little bit. Uh, there is a strong contingency in those budgets. Just to make sure that, um, you know, if it takes the state two years to process the grant, you have two years of inflation, rising construction costs, now all of a sudden can you not pay for, you know, the work you were, and the town is now forced to foot, you know, a little bit of the bill. Uh, so those estimates are on the high side, but also, once we get it, we, we have done no design work on this so far. So once we get into our design, we will refine our construction cost estimate. Uh, the construction cost estimate you see there is, is really, I don't want to say a shot in the dark, but it's an educated guess because we haven't done any of the design work. Once we get through the design, we'll have a much tighter idea of the construction budget. And that's when we go back to Mass DOT for the next round of the small bridge grant and say, you know, here's our, here's our costs. And can you please help us fund that? So.
Okay, so.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So it's still before the bid process, but it's, it's probably a more realistic estimate because I, because I, I, like with complete streets is they gave us an amount, right? So I think we asked for a half a million, right, but they're four hundred thousand, but they gave us two fifty. Um, and part of that was because, you know, we couldn't have separate bike lanes and right, there was, you know, we didn't meet all the complete streets criteria. I, I, I believe that was the part of the reasoning. Um, but we're less likely to have that sort of issue here where it's, uh, it's, it's a little more specific. Um, but also too, the number that you ask for is really the number that you're going to get. You know, if we say, oh, it's going to cost two sixty, they're not going to necessarily come back and say, well, you know, we, we don't want to pay for this or this or this, right? We'll only give you a hundred and eighty, right? I mean, I guess, right, but, but yeah, I'm just saying, because the, the difference right now for us being a small town that's budget is incredibly tight. Um, it just, you know, it'd be a lot of effort that would be wasted if, if we had to come up with an extra fifty, seventy, a hundred thousand, you know? Um, and I, and I assume you can't take, you can't carry over the design costs.
No, you can't.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Well, yeah, I should take that back. In the past, they, they haven't done it this way before where they've broken up design and construction. I, I think part of that is, you know, they want to get a good idea of what a project is going to be before uh, awarding construction dollars. So this round of the small bridge funding is the first time we've seen them divide up construction and design. So I don't know if they say, you know, Carlisle, you've given us, we've given you a hundred thousand dollars for design. If you say, well, we only need eighty-five of it, do they say, okay, well, you only get eighty-five? Or do they say, let's take that fifteen and roll it into construction? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But my thought is probably not. They would probably just want to separate the phases.
Yep, no, I agree, yeah. All right, no, thanks, Bob, those, those are very good.
But just, Bob, as a reality, are we, are we actually talking about roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design and fix, not the bridge, but just the rails and the whatever on the bridge? Does that ma- have you been to that bridge? That's like a twenty-foot bridge.
Mm-hmm. So the, uh, the project I discussed in Hubbardston uh, was, was right about, around that, when you had two, um, two, uh, different bridges. So also I should specify in our proposal, you know, that, that we put together, that wasn't just our fees. That includes a full site survey at both locations. It includes a wetland scientist to come out and flag the wetlands for us. Uh, it includes filing of two NOI permits for the wetland disturbances we'd be having at these locations. So, and it, you know, we have to, as part of the, uh, small bridge program, uh, we have to go through a twenty-five percent review and a hundred percent review. Uh, in addition, we have a, an Army Corps, uh, self verification, uh, permit that we'll need to file for this work.
Oh, I mean, I get it, you know, we got all these regulations in Massachusetts, but it's not really for, it's not really directed at T E C. I think this is directed at us as a town. I mean, the, the rails, I go over that bridge several times a week, actually, because we run the dogs by there. You know, the rails kind of work. I mean, yes, if you drive a car fast enough, you'll crash through and get into the drink, but people don't really do that. Are we as a town, are we getting behind this? Are we going to spend political capital on? It just doesn't smell right to me that we're spending that kind of money on twenty feet of bridge. And I don't know the curved street bridge, so I can't really comment on that. But I know the Maple Street Bridge very well. And it just doesn't seem right to me.
My only concern around that is, um, liability issues. It's one of those deals, unfortunately, this has now been brought to our attention that the, do not meet spec for math. And if there's somebody that wants to lies in their car or be going, regardless, going too fast and, you know, get injury, we could, I'm wondering if we couldn't be.
So why don't we, why don't we, Kate, why don't we speed bump it?
Well, I, I'm just,
No, I mean, seriously.
But you're, you're raising a question, I'm just trying to.
No, I get it, I get it, but I mean, if the issue is idiots driving above the speed limit and crashing through a thing, then speed bump it, you know? I mean, I, I just, listen, it just seems crazy, like we got to ask ourselves, what are we doing? Is there a way to do that more efficiently? What are we doing for three fifty? Why don't we figure it out for a hundred?
Townwide, I just have to say, townwide, um, I know my own road, um, some of the the barriers were old, you know, pre-assorted posts that I brought it through. I know along Lowell Road, or Concord Road, rather, um, there's a lot of, you know, um, concrete posts with, uh, cable which are, uh, deterior- you know, all, all over town, we have safety barriers that are deteriorating or, you know.
Right, but are we ready to plop down that kind of money on all over town? I mean, you know, this.
Well, I think that the state has a program. I'm, I'm not willing to put it in personally or as the town, but it's, this is a state, as far as I understand, a state project. Um, we got bitten by the, uh, the rotary and I'm, you know, I think a bunch of us are still sore about that, but as Luke pointed out, part of the reason is that the five hundred thousand turned into two fifty was because we weren't really totally up to snuff on this, on the, you know, all the requirements of the program. I'm assuming that we would be up to snuff on this one and that what we would respond, request, we would get. And then I think we still have a chance to not do the project. We would have to, you know, release the funds and not use them. I mean, if it were to be more expensive than what we got.
So you're saying, you seem to be saying, Kate, that we would get roughly a hundred percent of the cost.
That's what I'm, I was hearing our, this consultant saying. Um, and if that is not the case, we can always, you know, it hasn't cost us personally, so to speak, to do the investigation.
I mean, is there a local, I got to ask, is, Bob, you know, is there a low-cost way? Is there any way to make a cheapo fix? Because, you know, yeah, okay, maybe the state pays, but at the end of the day, it's kind of a zero-sum game. I mean, if we, we can take the state's money, but, you know, we want the money for other things too. And if we're all, you know, tragedy of the commons kind of thing, if every municipality says, well, I'm going to grab whatever I can get, there just won't be that much. We have a kind of a social responsibility too, to not be stupid with the way we spend money.
I, I agree with you, but the DOT has already, you know, earmarked the money and has already done the work. I don't think we, we're going to, by not taking the money, change that.
Okay.
And so we might as well be some of the, since we're paying that all in our taxes, we might as well get some of it back into our town.
Yeah, yeah, because if we don't grab it in another town, well. You're going to spend it.
And have paid it.
All right, okay, I give up. I've asked my questions.
And I, I appreciate all your questions, I'm, I'm not, you know, but I not sure what the, the right answer is, but I think those are.
Okay, further discussion?
Thank you, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, all right, I want to thank tech for the presentation, also, uh, for their help in obtaining the grant in the first place. Uh, that was a big part of, uh.
So, um, Alan, what are the next steps here?
I think the next step is, uh, they do the design. Uh, I, I don't, Tim, does this require a vote of approval?
Well, I, I, I do think the board ought to go on record as, as supporting to the, uh, the, the design in the first place because that, you know, uh, I think the, the design has been funded and I, I think the board ought to vote to, you know, pursue the, to do the design phase at least. And if the board would like to see a similar process to that that we conducted with complete streets where we consider proposals from other engineering firms and willing to do that, I'd like to know from the board that we're going forward with the design as a first step.
All righty, I will, uh, ask that we have a motion to, uh, move forward with the design on the Maple Street and Cross Street Bridges and accept, accept the grant from the state.
And that also includes, um, uh, having tech do the design?
Yes.
Yeah.
The move?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Kate Reed, uh, further discussion?
Yeah, I, just, just one last clarifying question, um. So I think what I heard was, uh, you know, we have the money in hand already, has been granted already up to a hundred thousand dollars for the design. Then, um, then there's a, uh, another round of funding where we would put in, um, the construction bid or the construction estimates for each of the two bridges. And, and then, and if we, if this, if the state uh, funds those two bids, but at a lower level than what the estimate is, I, I'm not sure I heard your, are you able to then go back to the state and request additional funds or in that second round, whatever they agree to give you, grant you, that's all you're going to get? So if it falls short of the construction bids, then we either have to not do it or we have to come up with money ourselves to cover the full cost?
So a few things, uh, like I said, this is the first time we've seen them, uh, separate the design and construction. Usually it's all one. Uh, typically these grants go up to five hundred thousand dollars, uh, and that's their cap. So if you have a project that's going to be six hundred thousand dollars, you know, Mass DOT would fund five hundred thousand and then the town would have to come up with, uh, the rest. Um, since we don't think this will go over that five hundred thousand, I don't see any possible way it could get that high, um, then we, they would fund it completely. I've never seen a project under five hundred thousand get partial funding.
Okay.
Not once.
Okay, and the, the two bridges are being looked at as one project, so it's five hundred thousand? Okay, okay.
Yep.
Yes, total, thank you.
Mike, Mike, I have one additional question. Then, when we, if we were, when we go in for the construction grant, is that done pre-bid or post-bid?
Uh, pre-bid, pre-bid.
Pre-bid, so they could, so if we ask for four hundred thousand dollars and give it to us, but it comes back at four hundred and seventy thousand, then we're on the hook for the other seventy thousand?
Right.
Or we don't, or we don't do it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we could put in a contingency, uh, you know, to make sure that what we're requesting from Mass DOT isn't the down to the penny what we think it'll cost.
Understand.
We can put in a contingency to say, okay.
Okay.
Well, is there a prohibition from going out to bid before asking for the money? Because you think.
Yeah, I, I think you have to bid it in good faith, right?
Yeah.
You're bidding it, uh, contingent on receiving the money, I mean, and receiving the money from the state. We do it, we do it contingent on, on, um, approval by town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah, that.
Oh, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah, I mean, the other piece, the other piece would be, could we just request five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
You have to validate the,
Yeah.
You know, you have to back up your request with a quote?
Uh, we would back it up with the, the cost estimate. And if we show a, you know, I've shown forty percent contingencies on those before and no one's batting an eyelash. So, um, you know, putting in a, a healthy twenty percent contingency, uh, just to let Mass DOT know that they're not, this isn't a bid that we have in hand, this is an estimate. Um, I think it's very reasonable.
Okay.
Also, for your, for your.
If we bid five hundred, it comes in.
Okay, we've been recently burnt by, uh, estimates, uh, cost estimates, um, for the past couple of projects that we tried to do as a town. Uh, then we weren't able, we voted the, the projects and then we're not able to complete them because the estimates came out so outrageously much higher. Um, so that's why we're, you might wonder why, where we're coming from, but we're very.
Nope, it makes sense.
I mean, you can always, you can always back out.
What's burnt twice shy?
Fair enough.
Bob, i- i- if, if we bid, if we ask for five hundred and there's a twenty percent contingency and it comes in, you know, say four hundred without the contingency, we just underspend the grant then, right?
Yeah, we don't get to keep the money.
Reimbursement, yeah. It's all a reimbursement system, so once your, once the money's been spent, you've paid the contractor, then you apply for reimbursement with the state, yep.
But you could do a vote contingent upon getting approval of the grant.
Oh, sure, but we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't agree to do the project till we know what's the cost, cost is and what the grant was.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's, you're talking town meeting, we're talking about, uh, okay.
Okay, all right.
We could vote right now.
Yes. So we have, we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, I will, uh, call for roll call.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
David, David, it looks like he's frozen.
Yeah, he does.
Uh, all right, Reed, I.
I'm still seeing the Maple Street thing on my screen.
Yeah, that's, it's still up.
Yeah, but I can see David down there and he's not moving. There he is, now he's back. There we go.
That's what happens when you move around, the, the wifi, um, breaks up.
All righty, motion passes to Adam. All righty, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Bob and Mike, appreciate it, and look forward.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. I will step out of the meeting now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item number five, the town meeting warrants. We, I think first, let's talk, let's address the issue of quorum. We have, we, we put notice out after the last meeting to the town that we were considering reducing the quorum for town meeting from our normal to down to 75, as we did for, in the spring town meeting. So I will accept a motion to do that, and then we can discuss it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to reduce the quorum to 75 registered voters for the October 17th, 2020 special town meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. All right, discussion?
It worked last time.
Yep.
Frankly, I'm ready to, you know, reduce it permanently, because the 150 that we used to do was so painful some years, made doing business much tougher, so.
Well, and, I mean, the rationale at the spring town meeting, of course, was that we didn't have a whole lot of substance to vote on. This one will be a little bit more, maybe not a lot more, but I think it's, it's, given the conditions, we don't know what is gonna happen with COVID between now and the second week in October. We could have a big uptick, which could have caused people to decide not to come to a group meeting, but I think it's a wise thing to do.
Especially if it's cold, they want to huddle together.
Cold or snowing, or you name it.
They can't huddle.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Joshua, I. Louis, I.
Model I.
Reed, I.
The motion passes unanimously, the quorum will be reduced to 75. Thank you. All right, town meeting warrant, we have a number of issues to discuss, and I see Jim Darr is on our meeting here. Evening, Jim, thank you for being here. The Finance Committee left, was met last night and had a very productive meeting. So let me go, I'll go through this, so I think we ought to approve these one at a time. Article one is simply to approve the prior year bills. Any?
We don't have any at the moment.
No, no prior, that's even easier.
Just in case.
Just in case. Okay, article two probably is the, one of the more important ones, adjustments to the fiscal 21 budget. It's not 221, we're just in 21. But Jim, would you like to talk about the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Certainly, Alan. Well, the, are you looking at a version of this budget that has three columns or two?
Three.
Three.
Okay, just so, that's what I have, too, just to be sure. What the third column represents are changes in the second column that we are proposing, but the bottom line would remain the same as it was in June. And our rationale was that even though we've all seen some encouraging signs in the past three months, you know, the schools are in business, Chapter 70 is level funded to last year, our property tax revenues, though slightly down from the prior year, are, they're still holding up well. At the same time, I think this committee, our committee, the Finance Committee, believes that there are still many uncertainties facing us, and that it's still a time to be very cautious about the financial commitments of the town. The state that committed to the Chapter 70 level funding, I think everyone knows, is facing a huge financial shortfall. They don't have a budget yet, three months into the fiscal year. How that will play out for us, we don't know. You know, our, our sense is that it is a service to our taxpayers to try to hold the line at this time, just three months beyond the last meeting. We know unemployment's still pretty high here in Carlisle, so, you know, we, we think it's important that they get that message from the town. So what we did is we, you know, made a number of changes in the, in the budget that was passed, but all of the increases are related to personnel decisions, mainly ones that you made as the Board of Selectmen at that time. The COLA increased hours for certain individuals, contracts for the dispatchers, the, the new year of the contract for the police. There's really nothing that we have proposed to increase that isn't personnel-related. And to pay for those, we are enjoying, this year anyway, some lower costs from the high school as a result of the apportionment of students, and we took really the rest of it, as David pointed out earlier today, from OPEB. OPEB is a significant long-term obligation of the town, as we all know, but it is also something that, you know, we have begun to pay into. It's something that, whose current year costs the town pays out of its current budget, so we're not, we're keeping up with what we owe our current retirees. But it's something that we can reduce now without causing any problems for the town's credit rating. In the future, we'll have to, you know, look at this again, but as a result of that, we could end up with a budget, bottom line, the same as last year, and we felt that was the message that we would like to propose to the community at large.
Good, thank you. Okay, the other, the other financial issues are coming in additional articles. Does anyone have any questions on that rationale for the operating budget?
I only have one, well, I want to say comment, I, first of all, I totally support what Jim's saying. I think it's good work by the Finance Committee to hold the line, this is the year to hold the line in expenses. Jim, I'd asked you, and you mentioned that, you know, a couple of the increases were contractual. I missed one, which I'm looking at right now, which is the, let me get it back up here, is the, I think Veterans Agent has went from like 11,000 to 19,000?
Yes, that is driven by the increase in the number of veterans that have to be served by the Veterans Agent. So it's more time that we need to, I mean, I may not be phrasing this correctly, because it's not my area, but it may be more time we have to buy to provide the services to an increased number of veterans, which I think only is going from two to three, or it's a small increase, but it's expensive.
Yeah, it's small money, okay.
Yeah, we're not increasing many veterans, but the agent, the person who was handling it before has, is not there anymore, so we've had to join with another town to do a different way of doing our Veterans Agent, which is costing us, yes.
I thought, Kim, that we had one more veteran that we had to serve.
I, I think, I, I think we do have one more veteran on there that, and we could get, the thing is, we could get more with the new Veteran Agent to, to make this available to other veterans, but a bulk of it is for the salary costs, too, for having a different person doing it and having an extra veteran.
And also, I mean, seeing, David, you asked a question unrelated to what I'm gonna say, but, you know, seeing you reminds me that I didn't mention that even though the schools have begun again, they clearly are the biggest question mark in terms of operational costs the rest of this fiscal year. You know, I think we are kind of on the same playing field with both of them at this point, but if I were to say, where are we gonna get hit with something that we don't expect right now, it'll be from the schools, and we, we need to be prepared.
Right, so each school, that's a good point, I was gonna ask you that, Jim, so each school is a little different, right?
Yes.
The region has its own little pockets of E and D and prepays and all this stuff, so I guess my, you know, my simple view is that they're sort of self-insured against cost increases, and I'm not even sure how cost increases or, you know, unexpected things work if they have to come back to the two towns. So I, I, that's like its own little thing. The, the Carlisle Public School has already said that they anticipate, I forget the number, but maybe it's 150,000 of possible increases, right? So, and we flat-budgeted them, notwithstanding their own, you know, salary increases and other things that are going on. So if they needed more money, that would be, I don't know, in the springtime, I guess, when they finally decide that they can't make ends meet, what's the mechanism and where are we gonna get the money?
Well, one, one step backwards relates to another challenge that Kim and Priscilla have had, which is that the CARES money that was allocated to the town has turned out to be extremely difficult to spend.
Okay.
Even for things that all of us in a common sense way would say, well, of course, you know, those are PPE, well, obviously, that's CARES, not necessarily. So the school and the town are talking about, you know, some of these extra costs might be covered by CARES. The main tool we'll have, David, as we go forward, would be budget transfers.
Yep.
Have augmented the, one of the lines in the budget for insurance, group insurance and Medicare, to somewhat deal with that, we've used that in the past. In fact, you may remember back in your days on the Finance Committee, that that was often the, the place we turned to when we had to make transfers. Now, if they're, if they're a lot bigger, you know, we'd have to look for other solutions, but the other part is, we have another town meeting, potentially six or seven months off.
That's true.
And also, Jim, the reserve fund, if you notice, has been doubled from prior years.
Yes, it has, but there's some levers on what we can use that for, you know, it might work for the schools, David, but it may not, just depends on what the problem is.
Right, okay. Okay, I mean, you know, we can't predict everything. What's our, just as a frame of reference, what's our current free cash balance?
Well, actually.
Around 2.7.
Okay.
And our total liquid reserve balance is about 3.9, that includes the stabilization fund.
Right.
And, and this actually relates to the next item, Alan, if I could jump ahead a little bit, and that is that the Finance Committee has traditionally said we should keep between 10 and 12% of the operating budget in liquid reserves, that is stabilization plus free cash. Right now, it's at 13%, and we are proposing that we use about 475,000 of that to pay for the two next warrant articles we'll talk about, but that would reduce the, the free cash and stabilization to 11%, right in the middle of that range we've tried to stay in.
We on to that item now?
We can.
Well.
Well, let's, let's first do the operating budget, article, article two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, I'm personally fine with everything, Jim.
Any other discussion on operating? Kate? You're muted, Kate.
I have, okay, go ahead, Kate.
Okay, sorry, you're three, I was trying to read your three columns, and the first two are the same, because they were meant to be the same, right?
Yes, right.
And then the third column, there's a number in it, which is just a change, so I.
Right.
I, so actually, you have to do the math in your head, right? Just so you know that what now treasurer is 12,806 more than it was before.
You don't have to do it in your head, that's what the columns for, Kate.
But you're, you're talking to add it in or subtract it out.
Talking adding and or subtracting.
Those will be budget items that Priscilla will do, the departments will get their whole budget, but you're very appropriate and raise and appropriate at the town meeting, the 30,699. The bottom line is zero, you're not raising any more money, but you are voting to have the expenditures increased or decreased.
All right, so although we're, so.
But the department will get their original budget and then a budget amendment, or Priscilla might just do it as one budget when she puts it in for them.
But the total operating budget.
Has not changed.
Well.
Well, slightly, yeah, yeah.
If you look at the bottom in bold, total operating budget, the first column says 30,871,918, the second one says 30,699,630. Oh, and so we're just keeping that at zero, I see, we're not changing.
You're not changing the amount, yep, you have to go all the way to the bottom.
Got it.
Numbers, so you're, you're not raising any more money, it's a level budget, but you are voting in between lines. So now the treasurer, or the Veteran Agent, or the police or dispatchers have a different budget number, school has a lower one, but the net is zero.
So the $200,000 less in total operating budget that we are, that you are now, that was, was the.
School.
June budget that we had is less because we have less in OPEB, that's.
It's, no, there's no change, Kate, it's because of debt service.
Debt service is 1.3 million.
What we're doing is we are focusing on the number approved in June, which is the 30,699.
Yeah.
Net zero to that number.
All right.
Which has to be a little lower than the last year because of the change to debt service, which.
All right.
An operating item.
Which is actually under the line, because you exclude whatever you raise on that.
All right.
We, we do our best to make these budgets things as confusing as possible, so.
Congratulations, you have succeeded. I was trying to figure out, okay, it, it looks like we actually reduced the operating budget already.
Which in a way it has from the debt, but that'll go back again after I do.
I was trying to figure out how that happened, and that, so I was wondering if it was because we put less, 200 less in OPEB, because I can see we put 200 less in OPEB from each to the other.
You can balance, I mean, Kate, you can balance, if you set sort of debt service aside.
Right.
Just set that all, whole thing aside. You can balance the decrease that the region is giving the Carlisle, because they, they haircut their budget, and.
Less students, too.
Yeah, maybe a little, right, a little bit of that, I guess.
We benefited from lower, yeah.
So we get, we get a little pickup there.
Yeah.
And the offsetting entry is the increase in insurance costs, which I guess, you know, insurance is going up, so to me, that kind of washes out. And then the balance mechanism is OPEB, so the, you know, the structural question is, you always, you, you keep sort of stealing a little from OPEB, are we still actuarially okay? I presume we are.
We're, we're actually, well, I mean, to, to, it's always good to put into OPEB, but as long as you're doing something, we're way ahead of a lot of other towns.
We are.
And then I also did the restructure, so we will actually see a $4 million savings when we go into FY '21 and '22, because of how, how it was reported, it wasn't reported to really offset the full liability, it was just aside. So I think you, before your time, David, the Selectmen signed, and I did all the documentation on that, so we put it in a full trust, and that will reduce it, that will reduce our liability by 4 million. So even though we're putting in less, our liability will reduce by some. And thankfully, during this whole thing, with how the stocks are doing, is we did dollar cost averaging, I didn't put the, when I stepped in, no amount had been put into OPEB, so I dollar-cost averaged over the last five months that I was here, so that we actually fared, fared well during everything.
And a note there, Kim, money hadn't been put into that trust, we had set aside open money.
Yeah, yes, we had set aside, right.
Town wasn't benefiting from the advantages of the trust until recently.
And, and the thought process is, is to go back to doing that, but a lot of towns during this, and I have a call with Moody's on Thursday, it's not going to affect our bond rating to reduce that at this time. A lot of towns are pulling from stabilization funds and doing other things, so we are still putting in 65,000, I believe, and that's hopefully, like Jim said, that's a one-year thing right now to do this level budgeting. While the budget is level, the levy is below what it is, was last year, because there's only, the articles are different, so depending on how articles are funded, right now, you're below what you actually levy last year on the recap.
The levy's lower, or the amount we, we are using of the levies?
The amount, you're actually, the, the levy that you're going to assess.
Right.
For take, yeah.
Yes.
Everything.
Your levy, you know, you'll, you'll increase your levy with new growth and all that, so your levy capacity. and all that, so your levy capacity is going to
Capacity goes up, but our spend rate
You have no problem with levy capacity. Some towns are at the max.
Right.
But what you're going to tax the taxpayers on the tax bills right now is less.
Right. And that's a good thing, I think.
That's a good thing. So maybe Kate would be happy in the rate, even though things go up and down. I can't see, the, the rate might actually go down.
Well, but, you know, I think, you know, what, in the letter that we've drafted for, this is for our committee, what we're trying to say is because it's a revaluation year, you know, there can be changes in the rate for individual households. They seem anomalous when we're saying to them, oh, we're not asking for any more money as a whole. So we tried to do, that's why we're focusing on this operating number, keeping it constant as a thing to get the, you know, taxpayers to focus on, but their own tax bills may go one way or the other.
Right. Exactly.
Right, but, but, but they won't go up. But to your point, Jim, they, they may go a little up or down, but not by much, right?
They shouldn't, you know
They should not.
Weird on the revaluation is going on, you know?
Yeah, unless you had to put a wing on your house, yeah.
Yeah, or, or, you know.
So, yeah, you could levy 28,500, 28,500,000 last year if you're doing 28,400,000 this year, you know, with, given what it is. It, it should be a less of an impact.
And, and let me also mention there that because of Prop 2 and 1/2's permission to go up to 1/2% because of new growth, our excess levy capacity will increase.
Correct.
And that is a type of savings, you might say. It, it means that we have more room to tax people if need be within the rules of 2 and 1/2. Now, you know, nobody wants to do that, but, you know, it's some elbow room that in the worst case, you know
Worst case, you can raise, yeah.
No.
Without
Hopefully, the chance of us, you know, bumping up against that limit is low, but the PR value of saying, I would say, PR value of telling the voters, we're this far under what we could be charging you, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot, you know, it's good.
Yeah. It's like, like a parent saying, you know, I, I could have beaten you 10 times, but I only
All right.
It's a good point, David.
It's all marketing. Everything's marketing.
I will accept the motion to approve Article 2.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you very much. Motion passes.
One quick, one quick question on it is, when this is finalized to go out to residents before the town meeting, is that third column going to look the same way it does on this version we're seeing?
Yes.
So I think it's going to be really important, then, that the summary, the lead-in, right, makes it really, because otherwise, people will have the same confusion that
And, and, you know, it's an excellent point, Barney, because when I drafted the letter, I was assuming that, that the three columns would be folded into two, but I think we need to mention that in the letter and make it clear.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Article 3, Special Appropriations. There are two items in there. One is to fund the assessors in the amount of $5,000 for assessor map updates and $3,500 to the treasurer account, accountant for financial consulting. Any, I'll accept the motion to accept Article 3.
Move to accept Article 3.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
How critical are these? Because they've been on the, they were on the warrant last time, and we, you know, we bumped them off, and I think the time before, so.
Well, one is for the assessors with the maps and all that, and she's, she did get money for reval, but the maps do need to be updated. Wasn't immediate that it had to be done over the summer. And for consulting, we've got fixed assets and some things for the accountant and the treasurer's office that we really need to pull into, some consulting to get per year end stuff done, which isn't really going to happen until November, so that was why putting it off on that. But given the year two and everything that's going on, we've got to do a lot of reporting, and it would be beneficial to have those funds.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the reason we didn't do it in the spring is because it could be put off. It wasn't immediate over the summer.
Correct. And what about the financial consulting?
Well, that's, that's because of the extra workload for, that Priscilla's having
Some that's not covered in CARES, and we have fixed, you have a fixed asset program that's quite antiquated, and they usually have to come in and work with that on the fixed assets. And you need that for your
I didn't understand that at all, Kim, what you just said.
At the end of the year, you have to do a fixed asset program, and you have to allocate all of that. And last year, when I was in two, is, it's kind of an off Excel type of program, so the auditors need to convert that over, and they need to bring on all the, the fixed assets. Part of that money, I would like to get them to do with the new program, put on so that I could run it, but right now, there is consulting that needs to be done if you want to put that number on your financials, and you do need that number on your financials. So if you don't vote it, you might not get that number for
Really not an optional.
Yeah. Okay. That's helpful.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. This is Article 2.
Arnold, I. Article 3, right?
Article 3, I'm sorry, Article 3, yeah.
Yeah. Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
What, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. Motion passes. Article 4.
And again, sorry, Alan, not to beat a dead horse, but I would also, in the summary, I think it'd be helpful to say a little more than that about why we need these two sources of money.
Okay. Article 4, Application of Bond Premiums.
I move approval of application of bond premiums.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll vote on Article 4. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Article 5, Capital Equipment. Jim, do you want to talk on that?
I can't speak to that. Let me note that Scott Triola, who's the chair of that committee, I, I'm a member of it, and I offered to speak tonight in his place. We have a couple of other members of the committee who are here on the call right now. You know, the committee has looked at a pretty long list of potential capital items. The three that are now proposed, the compressor for the fire department, the police vehicle, and a pickup truck for DPW, this committee feels are all essential to purchase during this fiscal year. Initially, we were supportive of the first two. We were hopeful that if Gary really needed a pickup truck, he could use Chapter 90 money for it, but we learned that he cannot, that it's not permissible. And yet, at this time of his two pickup trucks, the one that was in the accident has now been not only totaled, but been taken away by the insurance company, leaving him with just one truck. And as we enter the winter, that's particularly risky, because both of those pickups are used for plowing. So the additional 43,000 for that, which includes the price of a plow, brings it up to 175, which is what this committee is recommending to the town. If I could just do parenthetically, you know, segue to the finance committee, as we looked at this article and the next one for facilities, we felt we wanted to stay within the guideline that we set for ourselves of not asking the town for more revenue. And so we thought that these two big articles should be paid for from free cash. Historically, free cash has been used for one-off things like capital items or projects, not for operating expenses. If we were to do 175 here, and then the 300 that we recommended for facilities, at 475, that's what would we reduce the free cash to 11%? Well, free cash and stabilization to 11% of the operating budget, as I mentioned earlier. So that was our thinking behind this. But on the three items themselves, the committee met earlier this evening and, and recommends these three to, to the board.
All right. To clarify on the one we're looking at, the Article 5, it does not have the DPW truck.
The truck's not in there yet? Okay, but
That would be added. Okay.
It's, it's a pickup truck and plow at 43,000.
Yes.
So I move that the board of, accept Article 5 for capital equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none.
This, does this also mean then, Jim, that, like, how does that get explained at town meeting in terms of that it would be coming from free cash? Or, or is that another part of the process, that we approve that?
Well, oh, Tim, you were going to say
It, it would be in the motion that town meeting votes, the, the
Okay.
The funding.
So it'd get added to the explanation up top? Okay.
And, and it probably would require quoting, you know, Larry Barton's old comment that free cash isn't free.
Free cash, yeah.
Or cash, yes.
We should have Larry Paul on there.
Well, it's already covered in the motion, because it's a transfer from available funds and/or boroughs, so. But, but would you change it to say that it would be coming, not
From free cash, yes.
Strike, strike that, that language and say that to, to transfer from free cash.
Gosh, I would change the article for that.
Okay. So we, hang on, I just, we had a motion written up here that the board, so then I, I would like to amend my motion then for Article
5.
5. To, subject to final revisions as to form by town council.
Okay. Second or read to the amendment?
Well, I want to make then a comment. Jim, are you giving a presentation at town meeting?
Yes.
I think it's, I don't know, you know, sometimes FinCom does it, sometimes not, but it would be worth a slide on the free cash balance, the guy, what you just mentioned, you know, the guideline is, I forget what you said, 11%.
Yeah, definitely, then.
Because, you know, the Larry Barton principle is, don't spend free cash on recurring items, right?
Right.
Don't use the free cash to buttress shortfalls in your operating budget, and you're not doing that. You're, you're taking extraordinary items and you're using free cash, and that's an appropriate use of free cash. So I think if you couple those in, in a slide, that that would be helpful to educate the audience.
And that will be also mentioned in our cover letter for, for the budget.
Yeah, because I'm not sure we're going to be able to show slides. Are we outside?
No, probably not.
It'll be hand gestures.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion on Article 5? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
What, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. Motion passes. Article 6, Municipal Facilities.
So I move that the board include Article 6 on the warrant, subject to final revisions as to form by town council.
And I, I would
Or a second?
If, oh, sorry.
We need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
But make a friendly amendment, or is this an appropriate amendment that, because this one says the sum of 500,000. So we, if, if we're, if we're agreeable with what the FinCom is recommending, we would be saying the sum of 300,000 from free cash, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
So maybe, I don't know if you want to amend your motion to reflect that.
Uh, okay, so let me move that the board include Article 6 with, which will be amended to read 300,000, as well as subject to final revisions to form by town council.
Thank you. Second or accepts?
Barney, you seconded?
Yeah, sorry. Second.
Discussion.
Well, I'll jump in. I actually wrote a memo today asking the council to look at the language on this, because the way it's written now, it looks like all the projects are listed below or going to be done by June 30th, and that ain't happening, especially not with 300,000. So the idea is to get some language drafted to be flexible, that these, these are samp, this is a sample, and maybe we should just, I don't know, with the FinCom or MFC, consider, you know, tearing down this list, I don't know. But anyway, the idea is that everybody's going to be keeping their, their powder dry. We'll do projects that, as are needed, and we're hoping nothing terrible is going to happen to any of the buildings.
None of that, I mean, none of that comes through in this, right? So is that
It has to be totally revised.
I mean, let me ask the broader question. So to whom does MFC report? Us?
Yes.
Okay. So have we had that discussion? I mean, have we had the discussion with them? What can reasonably be accomplished this year or started this year?
Um, not, well, no, I don't think, yeah. I'm, I'm the member of, I am a member of the MFC, however, so.
We should ask you, Kate, what, what can be reasonably accomplished this year?
Well, I think the MFC will do the things that absolutely have to be done. So septic system compliance, actually, we decided to take that off because it's currently not broken. It's working, and it's, the only reason it's not compliant is because they put some extra blockers in there, so, you know, but if the, you know, I know that Gary would really put the, repairing the salt shed as a very high item of priority for him over, you know, redoing his membrane roof. So, you know, we're going to do the things that, the first things that we're going to do is health, that, things that impinge on health, safety and welfare of the, of our employees and of town, you know, residents, and then we're going to try
You're, you're, you're giving us a philosophy, and I don't object to that, but, but what I'm saying is, in the spirit of this meeting, like, where we're trying to not spend, we don't want to spend what we don't have to spend. We can always spend it some future time. To blanket give 500,000 on a wish list of projects, which the MFC has historically overpromised, right? They just don't get, they just don't have the capacity to, to get that many projects done.
It's not that. It really is not that. It's because we have more projects than we can do with the money available, and it takes a lot of effort to sift through all of that stuff and do the ones that really need doing so that we're not spending money needlessly.
I'm okay. Is this list of, is this list of 10 odd projects, that list of things that need to be done?
Well, you know, it's a list that was, you know, made somewhere along the line, but certainly the MFC is, does not propose to modify the entry to the parking lot at town hall at this point, because it does not impinge on health, safety and welfare of, you know, of people. And so it's, these, some of these are remnants and artifacts of a list that was done in a, by an architectural firm.
Why don't we scrub? I don't disagree. I'm just saying, in my opinion, we just scrub it from its artifacts. We should have a, a real list of things that reasonably we need to do this year, or at least start this year. I get it that it's going to take two or three years, some of them, but that should be a that should be a real curated list, and then the money that goes with it should be roughly that amount of money that we need.
Okay, let me give you an example. The library chiller unit. It's something that should have been done four years ago, but we've had, now that we have a new facilities manager, he's gotten in there, rolled up his sleeves, and he's been nursing it so that we don't have to do this. But we don't know how long he's going to be able to nurse it, so he can maybe nurse it another four years, or maybe tomorrow it'll break irreparably, and we'll have to replace it. That's why these things, that's why the municipal facilities committee really needs the flexibility, especially when they don't have any money to do anything with. Otherwise, we could spend three million dollars very easily, and all the roofs have to be done in all the, all the town buildings, except for the police department. All the HVAC systems are on their last legs. It's like the school elevator. There's been deferred
Elevator, but, no, it's, but the school elevator, Kate, every year, every year that came up for a budget item, and every year, I said don't put it in the budget unless it's broken, and we didn't, and then when it broke, finally, we went and asked for the money from the town, which is appropriate, right? I mean,
No. Okay.
Barney, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a suggestion here. It seems to me that there are a couple of things that we want to try to do. One is, you know, I agree with the point that if we list, well, that we need a list that doesn't include things that we now know are a low priority or are not needed. So that should come off. But the second thing is, I think we want to make sure that we aren't misleading residents to think that all of the things that end up on that list are going to happen, unless we are pretty confident they can all get done for three hundred thousand, which I don't think we are, right? From the estimates I've seen. So I think for the town meeting, if we're going to go with a three hundred thousand dollar kind of ceiling for, you know, maintenance on our facilities in this next budget, that we, we should say that, and then there should be some sense of, and it can be said, you know, in the article, that this is the current, you know, best guess at the things that will be, this money will be used to repair, but that we're giving the flexibility to the municipal facilities committee if needed to switch the, you know, switch the order of what gets done. I mean, I'm being way too wordy, but you get the idea. And I, but I think we, we definitely need to do both. We need to have a, you know, a reasonable list to the best that the municipal facilities can provide it, and it needs to be something that is, if we're going to go with three hundred thousand, it should be something that can be reasonably tackled for three hundred thousand. And by the way, this, this article does say completed by June thirty, twenty twenty-three, but you're saying it needs more time than that, Kate?
Well, well, we always do these things for three years because sometimes between the
All right.
start to finish, it takes, you know, because you, first you identify the problem, then you get the engineer to look at it. And then, you know.
All right, so we do need to extend the date. All right, no problem.
Yeah. Put it to you this thing, this way, all of these things are needed, but we can't afford these things. None of these things are not needed. They're all needed, but we just don't know which ones are going to break first. And, and with five hundred thousand, we could repair more of them, and with three hundred thousand, you know, I think we, we have to have a different strategy, and so that's the, you need to, whatever you do, the wording in there has to give the municipal facilities some flexibility that if, these are examples of the sorts of things that will get fixed. It could be something else that we haven't seen, or, you know, hasn't broken yet. These are things that we know will break soon, but there could
Yeah, well, if we, if this was reworded simply to say, you know, pursuant to any applicable statute, blah, 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 of the facilities and maintenance improvement project to the town hall, and list all those places, and then simply say to be determined by the municipal facilities committee.
Personally, I would like it without a list in the warrant.
Yeah, I don't, this list is, is fantasy.
It is fantasy. That's what I'm trying, I think it is fantasy.
Well, I think if we do that, though, then we need to have more accountability. I mean, we've asked for a year now for facilities to come in and explain to us what's been going on, and we just haven't gotten it. I mean, you know, I know Nathan and I pushed back hard on Jerry. I mean, I'm not saying these things don't need to be done, but well, what happens is you put a list up there, and you say, oh, yeah, we're going to spend, you know, three hundred thousand dollars on this sort of stuff, and then, you know, none of the stuff gets done because there are other high priorities, right? I think part of the problem is we're completely, as the board of selectmen, we're completely lost in this. I mean, we don't, we don't really know what's been done, what's been spent. I mean, you know, because like, this is through twenty twenty-three. How much money is left in last year's budget? How much money is left in the year?
Last year was all borrowing, so no money has been spent from last year's things, because you had, we had to borrow the money. We weren't given any money.
Right, so then have these things not been done?
Basically, yeah, some of them, some of them are going to be done, the, what was in, I don't remember what was in last year's list.
Yeah, no, and, you know, to cut it to David's point, though, is that, you know, it's a huge amount for facilities to take on, right? And now you're adding more to that list. You know, and again, I'm not saying that these things
That's what I'm trying to say. It is not a, the list was made by those architects, and when we, the list is, I think the list is a straw, is straw man. It just doesn't belong there, and it confuses the whole conversation. It really confuses the conversation, because I can tell you what we've been doing. We're putting in a new septic at DPW, and we're putting in a new trailer at DPW. So, you know, there's a lot of work that has been already done. A lot of the stuff has not been done, as I said, because Bill Russo and Steve Bastick have fixed a lot of things in the town hall. And we're trying to nurse a lot of the things in order to not spend money unnecessarily, because we know how tight the budget is, and we don't want to spend six hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, you know, we're arguing among ourselves here. I mean, the point is, again, I'm going to say it again, I said it kind of to Jim. It's, this is effectively, it's a legal document, but it's also a marketing document, right? I mean, most of the town lives here in obscure, you know, they're completely oblivious to what we do fifty-one weeks out of the year, most of the time, right? And they get some information from the mosquito, and then, you know, in the before times, they would, some people would show up at a town meeting, and we would, you know, talk about some things sometimes longer than we want to. So, you know, now, I mean, people are really, they really don't know. I think most people don't really know. They're focused on, if they have school-aged kids, they're certainly focused on school, and you know, yeah, people don't want their taxes to go up, but I mean, I would make it more positive. I would say, can we make a chart? And maybe it's not in the warrant book, maybe it's a supplemental piece, but like what Kate just said, you know, here's some projects, here's some projects we did. Here's some things that have been identified as, you know, safety items that are mission critical, and maybe you want to add a few other things that, you know, we feel we should get to, and just have a chart, just say, this is what we're working on, and then say, we think the selectmen believe that, you know, three hundred thousand is a prudent amount to set aside for the continuation of these projects.
Well, it isn't. It needs to be like triple that amount per year for us to catch up with all the stuff that hasn't been done over the years. But that's okay, you know.
Yeah, because, you know, for this, and again, Kate, you know, given this situation that we're in financially, you know, it's one thing once we get back to normal, but
I totally understand that, and I'm not saying that we should triple it, and I'm not arguing against putting it to three hundred. What I'm arguing is you don't want to put the MFC into a straitjacket, because then they cannot get anything done. In fact, part of the problem that we have had is because of the stupid list, when we found a cheaper way to do something, we weren't able to do it because that wasn't exactly how it was written in the warrant, and so we weren't able to do it that way.
So we agree, Kate, we agree. Write the warrant as broadly as we can, but supplement the warrant book with a little PR piece.
I think that's a great idea.
Then, you know, and that way we've got flexibility, but at least people know, because if they just see a single line, and it says three hundred thousand, like, what, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to go on forever. And the thing is, too, I think, you know, we do, you guys do have to have flexibility. I mean, there has to be a tremendous amount of flexibility, and I think the board is going to support that flexibility. I mean, the warrant wouldn't even work.
Luke, you're very hard to understand. You're breaking up like crazy.
I'm not plugged in. I don't know. I'm actually hard. It's a microphones here. But, you know, I think the board has always been supportive of flexibility. I don't know why, you know, there have been issues in the past where the board was worried why we had to fix that. Because that's not the intent. The intent is that you have money for emergency funds, or if there's another issue that needs to be handled, I understand. You know, I do think we need some, I think, that we just have nothing there, that's going to be that's going to go out of line, too. But, you know, I do think we need some specificity, right?
It's
I think the chiller information has been out for the past three years, right? Somebody wants to turn around and say, oh, wait, are we still quoting on this, this shore? You know, the board can ask that, we just have like information.
Right.
But, but, you know, I do think we need some sort of list with a huge copy of that.
You know.
As other things pop up, we're going to have to do this. But you do need some. Because you have a dis- a line for three hundred, you know.
Bell, bellman.
I don't know what information the list is giving to anybody, because it's fiction. Through all things, I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with the three hundred thousand.
That's right.
I mean, the key to this is, we're going to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars and for the repair and upkeep of municipal facilities. The actual projects to be determined by the municipal facilities committee, and if we want to add it and approved by the board of selectmen.
I think a much better way of doing business, and if you really wanted the, you know, the municipal facilities, every time they came up with a new project or thought they were going to spend money, if you want them to come and report to you, there's no problem with that. In fact, they go through Tim. They don't just spend money. They, every time there's a project or something, you know, any money gets spent, it goes through Tim. So if you want to report on that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, we asked for that. We haven't, you know, I mean, we have to remember this time.
I have to, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you. I think you have gotten it numerous times.
No, we haven't.
We have descriptions for the documentation that shows what the money's been spent on. Jerry kind of came in last year. And I was like, and we asked for monthly follow-ups. Kate, that I said, they're matched from monthly follow-ups. Where it was supposed to be never.
But you could, I mean, you could ask, we could ask for a quarterly reporting. I mean, we had this discussion with Jim and the finance committee a few months ago at school comm level, was, you know, we finally agreed, or maybe it's a year ago now, but we agreed, school committee agreed with FinCom that there would be some kind of quarterly reporting of, the schools, I mean, I don't want to draw, they're not parallel, but school gets a lump sum budget. It doesn't really say what it's going to spend it on. It presents what it's going to spend it on the FinCom, but it doesn't really say at town meeting what it's going to spend it on. And, and school is deemed to have, you know, some knowledge and authority to kind of figure it out as it goes along, but what was agreed to with FinCom is, you know, it's fiduciarily good for the spender of the money to then report out on some basis. Here's what I spent this quarter. Here's what I think I'm going to spend, you know, whatever. Very simple. Doesn't have to be you know, a complicated thing, but it would be a degree of oversight just to report that out. So I think that's a good practice. I don't think that has anything to do with the warrant book, but I think that would be a good practice.
Yeah, let's try to keep the discussion on the, on the motion.
So, right, so for the warrant, again, I say it again, I think we should leave the language, the legal language should give maximum flexibility to Kate's point. And there's a accompanying either presentation by Jerry or a handout that just says, hey, this is the kind of thing we spend the money on, just so that the town understands, and that's it. I think that's all.
Okay.
Yep. I agree.
So we're not going to, the list will not be part of the
That would be
warrant of the article, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
And that's, excuse me, Alan, but the motion has, says three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye?
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you. And I think we can, we will need to address these other items as part of our normal business in terms of reporting and that sort of thing. I think, because they're all appropriate comments and things that need to be done. Yep, yep.
Luke, could you just jiggle your, jiggle your hard wire, just to make sure that, you know, it's
I mean, yeah, I mean,
Still very hard to hear you.
Yeah.
Lot of
You may want, you may want to try a headset.
Yeah.
Just don't talk so much, Luke.
Article seven, which is listed as Article twenty-one in the packet, but CPA annual recommendation.
Oh, that's my, Luke. This is his article.
I was trying to grab my son's microphone. So, I mean, I don't think Kate's here. So, motion one is the typical appropriations. The fifty-fourth law, that teaches a ten percent of pockets. We are giving twenty thousand for administrative funds, which higher than what we normally do, but we'll see in motion two. For the municipal society, there's a survey, if you will, of the inventory center, and then also throughout town. With survey, council is recommending administrative funds. That's why. The dam is, yeah, two hundred fifty thousand of open space is undesignated. And Tim, you can probably better in terms of just put in a grant. Just to give you an idea of that. Hopefully, that will cover most of this.
You're talking about the appropriation that was in an open space bond bill for the, I think it was two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, for the, you know, dam.
Yeah.
Right.
What it would be, but the appropriation, the two fifty would cover the entire project. Boy, it's been, it's been months since I've looked at it, so. But, yeah, hopefully, the bond bill will come through and cover that. So we do get it until twenty twenty-two, because I think we'll find out about the bill, what is it, end of this year now? I think Sylvia was saying. Maybe?
Oh, yeah. The grant, right.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully, you know, I mean, we move it, and then, you know, we get the award, and then we can, in the in the spring, when we can repair, so that's sixteen thousand. Because with the CBC, we voted yet. We're trying to set up our first meeting for next week, or a meeting for next week. Usually, these sorts of things, if it's going to go through the historic preservation fund, we would need approval of the historic commission, and I don't know if we necessarily have time to do that. Now, I know the town clock, they have deemed it of historical significance to the town, but either way, it's good practice to get that. So that's why right now it's written as undesignated. And then, so motion five, this is actually, we received the application
Um, and then, so motion five, this is actually, uh, we we received the the application, um, just the other day, so it's actually 25,000. And this is for, you know, um, Redford. So, going to do it, and their budget. Um, two more, just put in, what's the, do the, of, those with. I mean, it's. I guess. Um, so, we'll be, um, and keep the, that was the same, just be new. So, actually, two, two figures, one, motion four, um, so, we do need to make sure that an email from the FRS.
Um, there has been a collaboration.
Um, it's, um, grant agreement, that's just what we can find, is that, um.
This is called, this is the, the grant, this is the, they have buy-in from the school yet.
Um, and that will be part of the grant agreement that has to be approved from the school in order to be approval from, um, nation, to do the work on the clock tower.
I don't know if we want to use the, for the, um, for a lot of the trust, if we wanted to, 50,000.
So, you know, it's simple enough for us to have a quick meeting vote to the application. Um, for the old application.
Yes, I like what I said, uh, I was just thinking the other day, the tip of what you do is you don't have to process it right. Um, you know, so we would pull it out for.
We wouldn't be allowed to.
I was on the teleprompter.
Your own benefit.
Right, um.
Effect, but. So, the trust to go after new interest, if you will. Um, so, yeah, so that's.
Yes, six. Okay.
Okay, uh, we didn't have a motion, so I'll just accept a motion first.
Sorry.
Except, except Article seven, yeah.
Yeah. So moved.
Okay, and we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay, now we have discussion.
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Nate, do you want to discuss what we talked about earlier today? The job is that homeless and.
Uh, Wayne.
I missed that.
That was directed to Wayne.
No, that was to Wayne, yes.
Oh.
Yeah, so what you had, like, that conversation earlier, you, you want to?
Because, because a lot of these are very standard.
You're muted, Wayne.
Wait, oh.
I, I, I'm sorry, I honestly cannot hear Luke's question.
I can't either.
If if some, if someone heard it, could you please restate it?
I think he's asking about, uh, the possibility of, uh, bundling the motions, Wayne, on the CPA article.
Right, yes, so, um, what what we tentatively discussed, um, just for efficiency sake, um, normally we have to take each of the motions separately, uh, which is required by statute. Um, I was just checking in with Luke about, um, practically speaking, we could probably do a consent agenda to bundle some number of them, um, uh, which I I think would be kind of a, an, an allowable practice, but since this statute is fairly unique, I did want to check with town council. Um, so I put an inquiry in, but it was late this afternoon, I haven't heard back from him. Uh, so my thought would be that if we think that some number of these um, would be considered fairly routine and not require a lot of discussion, that we might just take a motion on the floor, we don't actually need to put it in the warrant to take up, uh, some number of them just as a consent, and then, unless anyone objects, um, then we just, uh, you know, vote on the three or four of them all at once, presented it, presented one time and voted at one time. We can figure that one out later, if we need to.
So, it which reminds me that we don't have a consent agenda article listed in this list so far.
It's it's my, it's my view that we do not need a consent agenda article, uh, even at the annual town meeting, I think it's a good thing that we do it because it puts people on notice. Uh, but technically speaking, you know, we we do three or four other procedural motions, uh, at the beginning of, um, uh, of every town meeting, they go by so quickly, most people don't even notice that we're doing them, so. Um, this is just another procedural motion that anyone could make from the floor really at any time if they wanted to.
Okay, so we're not going to put it in for the first time?
I I I don't think so, because I I don't, I don't see that we ought to try to bundle any of the other motions.
Okay.
You know, because because you've already, you've already paired most of the routine things out of this warrant.
We did those in the spring.
Yeah, okay, I just.
So, fair question.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote on Article seven.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye, because I don't know where David is.
I don't know where he's.
Is he still there?
Guess not. All right, well, we have a majority vote, uh, motion passes, there he is.
Does that any matter? Any matter?
No.
Uh, no.
No.
I've got.
May log out. Ready with that?
All right, all right, the motion passes, uh, I don't know what, I don't know what happened to David.
Sorry, Luke, you may have to start using the chat function.
Yeah, he's gone now too. Article nine, Article eight, funding for the cranberry bog maintenance project. Uh, $5,000. Nope, David's back.
I was here, I didn't hear a vote, I'm sorry, I voted to support it, I voted.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to move that we, uh, fund the cranberry bog maintenance project, Article eight?
Please.
All right.
Consider it moved, so, I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Wait a minute, Kate's.
Sorry, I was muted, um, the 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 vote is not to fund it, the vote is, the motion really should be to include the article on the warrant.
Right.
I, oh, I, you're right, you're right, I apologize, so I changed that motion to say, um, I move we put Article eight um, on the, uh, warrant for the special town meeting, the funding.
Yeah, and can I make also, recommend that, you know, um, contingent on, you know, any, um, polishing by the town council that.
Yeah, yes.
Any further discussion?
Subject to final revisions as, as to form by town council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, is it any better?
Yes, it is.
I should have just logged out from the beginning. So, this isn't, this isn't for actual maintenance, I, maybe people are hoping I didn't log up. Um, yeah, this is, so the idea is that, you know, we need to figure out a long-term solution. Um, so this is, this is going to be.
The grant, actually, isn't it, yeah, to.
Yeah.
Cranberry bog, bog project.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, you know, because the the goal of this, of that board or committee or whatever you want to call, um, is really to figure out, you know, some cost-effective, long-term solution. Because, yeah, it's, you know, because that that money was actually, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the maintenance money for the bog was actually rolled into ConsCom's budget. Um, yeah, yeah, under their maintenance line, so, um, this is in addition to that, so this is the the 10.
Okay.
But hopefully this will be, because I've been on that committee too damn long, hopefully this is, this'll come to a conclusion soon, a long-term solution.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Morel, aye.
Reed, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Article nine, to amend the general bylaws to rename the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Well, I move that the board, um, um, include Article nine, on that the board shall include only, a, a, a subject to final revisions as to the form by town council.
So I hear a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we lump Article 10 in there together?
Let's do them one at a time, because they're all, they're all separate articles.
All right.
Yeah, um, yeah. Let's get it done, guys.
Hearing no discussion.
I'm going to have to learn how to say, you know, I'm a member of the board.
Yeah.
This.
Roll, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Morel, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you, Article 10.
I move that, uh, we, the Board of Selectmen include Article 10 on the warrant, subject to the final revisions as to form by town council.
So I hear a second, there we go, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Morel, aye.
Reed, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Article 11, amendments to the personnel bylaw.
I thought we were taking this.
Let me move, let me, I'll make the motion and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I I move that we include Article 11, um, on the warrant, um, subject to final revisions as to form by town council.
Okay, so I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, so Barney and I have been working, uh, you know, with, one of our jobs was to, uh, look at the, the personnel bylaw. And then, sorry, the personal, personnel, yeah, bylaw and, um, handbook or whatever. Excuse me.
Policies.
Policies, thank you, um, and, um, we received this, um, bylaw as we were doing that work, and we have an, um, a meeting on Thursday with the town council to find out why it is so short. Um, because it it was like a three-page, um, this Article, um, 15 used to be, you know, about three pages long. And what we think they did was they took all the stuff out of the bylaw that was also in the policies. Um, and, which makes a lot of sense, except that we don't know that for sure yet, and, um, and we had some questions, Barney and I had some questions about how this bylaw is actually written and, um, and we don't feel that it makes explicit enough, um, some of the, uh, very important personnel issues that we have, um, major, one of which is evaluations not being done, and, um, not, it's not being understood that regardless of, um, who the particular staff member, um, supports, which group they support, the staff member is in fact a employee of the town, not an employee of that board. Um, so Tim, for instance, is, you know, hired by the town to support the Board of Selectmen, a- as well as other things, but he's not our employee, he's a town employee, and if we had an HR department, and if there were HR issues, the town HR department would deal with it vis a vis Tim, not us, because we're, we, we don't know anything from, about HR, we're not equipped to take care of it. None of the boards are equipped to take care of HR issues, and so we, I, you know, as part of Barney's and my study, we've come to feel that we need to, um, write this very carefully so that it's understood, you know, that there's an HR department that all, all employees come up basically under our purview. They're not under the purview of the, their individual boards.
So we just would recommend that we hold off on this, let us do some more work on it, and we bring it back when it's ready.
Okay.
So, that I.
So we wanted, so you're, so you're recommending we defeat the motion?
Yeah, yes, I am, but I thought it was still more important to do it that way, because then to do it a different way.
Okay, gotcha.
I had to make a motion one way or the other.
Yep, that's good, always good to do a positive motion and then we can throw it out.
Yes.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, no.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, nay.
Morel, aye.
Reed, nay.
All right. It's gone.
And Wayne is cheering in the one less.
Here comes the 51-minute town meeting.
Okay, so.
Article 12.
Um, I move that we, uh, that the Board of Selectmen include Article 12 to be numbered Article 11. Um, on the warrant, subject to final revisions as to form by town council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, discussion.
Okay, um, Barney, you want to discuss this, actually, I mean, this is kind of an, this is, uh, kind of a weird one, because we're not going to build the, um, the septic in that spot anymore.
Yeah, so that's been decided.
Well, we, let me put it to you this way, we're trying not to build it there, but it had, and we have done some engineering, but we still have some work done to do, so I'm not sure what to do about this easement.
Uh huh.
So, uh, I can back up for everybody else, um, one of the projects, um, that the, uh, facilities committee has been trying to do is a new septic for the DPW, and we tried to do a site survey because we wanted to be sure that we would site a septic in such a way that it wouldn't preclude, uh, use of, you know, parts of the property unnecessarily, because there's quite a bit of upland property beyond the wetland that there's there. And, uh, there's very little where the DPW is located right now, there's, you know, there's not a lot of extra land, and if you put a septic field in there, then you can't do this or that or the other with it, but we, while we were getting bids, um, it, so, we did an engineering study, the engineer said you can put it here, you could put it there, so we we took test bits and here in there, and we decided to put it there because here took up too much valuable space a- and land that could be used for other things. And then when we went out to forbid, one of the contractors said, well, why didn't you put it over there? And we didn't put it over there because the engineer hadn't, hadn't suggested that we put it over there. So then we called the engineer back in and said, what, could we put it over there, and they re-engineered it, and they said, yes, you could, and it would be way less expensive than where we were going to put it to begin with, so, um, where we were going to put it to get, to begin with, though, necessitated an easement from Barney, um, in order to get the pipe across, because there's huge extensive, um, wetlands there, and we needed to kind of divert around a little bit and clip a corner of Barney's property, and that was what this easement thing is for. Um, if we put it in another spot, we don't need the easement, so I don't know, Barney, it's it's kind of more the ball, I think, in your court, if you, um, if you, I'm I'm thinking maybe we should leave it in, hopefully before town meeting, we should have an, an answer about whether we're actually going to do it there.
Well, this actually doesn't say you're going to do it, it just authorizes us to do it if we need to.
Tim has a comment.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Hinton asked me to, uh, see that the board includes this in the warrant. I don't know his reasons, but he did send me an email to that effect.
Yeah, I think it's mostly because the other site is still up in the air, and if we are forced to do it in the original site, then we would have that easement in place, and if not.
No harm in including it, you can always not move it if it's not.
We, we don't have to move it if we get there and we don't need it, or if we do it, if if we vote to accept it, we still don't have to even, uh, still don't have to, um, uh, what do you call it?
Executed.
Executed, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. For the discussion?
Um, I I'm, I don't think I should take a vote on, I I'll abstain on this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Arnold abstain.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Morel, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you, motion passes. And Article 12, former Article 13. Rescind the general bylaw.
I move, uh, we include Article 12, um, subject to tweaking by town. subject to tweaking by town council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just clarify what this actually means.
Okay. When I got on the, on the board, four years ago, 3.9.2 said that FinCom members cannot belong to any other committee that has anything to do with making decisions about spending money. And yet, a bunch of FinCom members had been appointed to the Long Term Capital Requirements Committee. So I pointed out to everybody that really can't do that because it's, that's against our bylaw. So we changed our bylaw in order to let FinCom go onto the Long Terms Cap by adding the sentence, except for the, you know, they can't be on any of these committees, except for the Long Term Capital Requirements Committee. Now, over the past three, four years, a lot of the Long Term Capital Requirements items have been transferred more to the Municipal Facilities Committee and then the Long Term Caps Committee was left with the yearly cruiser, $80,000, you know, standing request for computers from the school and a couple of other things that seemed more like operating budget items in certain respects. And so some of, so you, you might have noticed, we, there were only three things on the Long Term Caps requirement warrant this time because all those other things have been shifted away. So the, there was some discussion among the Long Terms Cap people saying that, gee, maybe this would be better handled just through FinCom. And if FinCom wanted, decided later to do a subcommittee for themselves, they could. But we don't need this whole big, you know, apparatus for those things. And then, and the FinCom sees these requests before the, the Long Term Committee, Capital Committee saw them anyway. And they were very interested in being on that committee because it's important for them to be on that committee. So it should be their committee. So that, I, I think that's the best.
Could I make one comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure, Jim, go ahead.
In a word, Kate, it's redundant.
Yeah. Yeah. More wordy than what, how I just put it.
Also, I didn't want to just make a joke, though. Also, earlier this evening, that, that Long Term Capital Committee voted to endorse this article as currently written. So just so the board's aware of that.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for that. Again, I'd just say we, we definitely want to, you know, a simple summary there of what this is doing.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you very much. That completes our actions on the budget or on the town meeting warrant. Okay. Agenda item six, resignations and appointments. Community Preservation Committee.
Let me see. I'm trying to open it up, sorry. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Maureen Cosgrove-Derry to the Community Preservation Committee to serve as the representative of the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust with the term expiring June 30th, 2021.
Do I hear a second?
Is it 2021? Is that when the, the, because we've been doing, we do three years. I don't.
We were doing one year.
For the, this is for CPC.
Yeah, no, I know, but we do three-year terms for CPC because the thing is, we don't want everybody getting off at the same.
But the, but the housing trust is a one-year appointment.
Correct.
Is that how it's written in the?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why she's there only for a year.
Yep.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Represents the housing trust.
Yeah, the housing trust appointment is a year.
Yes.
Yeah. We're thinking, you know, we've had a little discussion about changing that too, to make it staggered three-year terms.
Yeah, we really should.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we're kind of self-staggered by it being the Board.
Selectmen, yeah.
Yeah, but, but still for the other.
The other members.
Yeah, we really should.
You can't get up to speed in time and then you're gone, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. We have been moved and seconded. Do we hear any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Okay. Highland Committee, I've still got a couple of vacancies, but I'm prepared to make recommendations that we can approve tonight for some of them. What I don't have is somebody from the Board of Selectmen. Does somebody want to volunteer to serve on the Highland Committee from the Board of Selectmen?
How often does it meet?
Don't know yet.
And are you going to, is it more like a working group that's going to try to work here in the day or at night?
I'm assuming it will probably be at night because there's a lot of volunteers on there.
What's the objective?
To make a, to make a recommendation on the disposition of the Highland Building at the Springtown Meeting.
Luke, are you wanting that?
If you want, you know what, I, I wouldn't mind doing it, but if you want it more, feel free.
No, I definitely don't want it more.
Yeah, no, I'll be on it. That's fine.
Thank you, Luke.
Yep.
All right. And we have Melissa McMaro from the Finance Committee, Annette Lee and Kathy Keller from the Historical Commission, Chief Soros from the Fire Department, John Ballantyne from the Master Steering Plan, Master Plan Steering Committee, Jerry Lerman from the Municipal Facilities Committee, Joan Ingersoll and Walter Hickman from the Council on Aging, and John Tross from the Historical Society. Those are the people I have. I still have a couple of other people I'm waiting to hear from, from the School Committee and the Recreation Department.
Okay, so.
I would move those names that I've just read off.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint those individuals to serve on the Highland Building Committee. And is there a term? For this? This is a pro-tam or an ad hoc or?
It's ad hoc.
Ad hoc committee.
So do we need a charter for this or no?
No, this is just, just for this one purpose, to make a recommendation to us before town meeting.
Yeah. And I will, I will write something more formal up for that, but it's, that's essentially the charge of the committee.
Yeah. And I know that Jerry Lerman is looking for information about demolition of the meeting because I know Luke asked for that. So that's underway, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you. Town Administrators Report.
Okay, before we get to that, Mr. Chairman, and I think the moderator's still on the call, we, we need to get the moderator's consent to the reduced quorum. That's also a requirement under the statute. I think the vote occurred before Wayne got on the call.
Okay. Wayne, we did, we did vote to reduce the quorum to 75 as we did in the spring.
So you may have the moderator's consent?
Thank you very much.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Tim?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item in my report, Kim Kane and I met with Maya Health Trust a week ago for an introductory meeting. Maya is the health, Maya Health is the insurance counterpart to Property and Casualty Division that covers our town buildings and facilities and so forth. And they offer exclusively Blue Cross and Blue Shield Insurance Products. In order for them to provide a quote to the town, we need a vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize them to to gather those solicit, those, those health insurance quotes and, and present that to us. So I'd ask you to formally authorize them and me to conduct that process.
I move that the Board vote to authorize MIAA and the Town Administrator to solicit health insurance quotes on behalf of the town for fiscal year '22.
We hear, I have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we recently opened bids for the DPW contracts, road salt and sand and eight different paving categories. I'll bet you never thought two or eight different categories of paving, but the list that there are indeed. So we, we've got a number of contracts to be awarded for the various items under the eight items under the, the bid package. You've probably noticed there's no Item 6 because we had no bidders for Item 6. So that's why we don't have a proposed award of that contract. And some of them are being awarded multiple items, but they're required to bid on each piece of it separately for some reason. So we ask that you approve the award, the road salt contract and then the paving items as well.
All right. I move the Board award one-year contract for road salt to Eastern Minerals of Lowell, Mass. at the price of $45.50 per ton renewable for two years at the sole discretion of the town.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
So nobody bids salt, uh, sand, Tim?
Well, that's correct. Nobody, no one bids sand.
So we can only salt?
This is only, yeah, road salt. Correct.
So, I mean, salt is damaging to the vehicles over time. It might be cheaper, more effective. So just, there's nobody who'll do sand anymore? Is that what this means?
We always got at least one bid, sometimes two for, for sand, but no one, no one bid on this. We can, we can put it out again. Gary's got some contacts.
So, ask when we hear, did we use sand, amazan and salt or what?
I, I think we primarily used sand.
Most, most, except on, except where required on the state roads, yeah.
So, so now we're going to be constrained to basically only use salt this year.
Or do we have a sand, do we have a decent amount already in the shed?
No, particularly we have to take it out to fix the shed anyway, but.
Yeah, I, I think that we, Gary can buy sand, you know, on a temporary, a month-to-month basis until we have the opportunity to bid it for a longer period of time. So he won't be without the means to, to purchase sand. We just don't have a long-term.
So he can buy, he can, at his discretion, he can buy, use sand or salt?
Yes.
And, and only if he does use salt, he has to buy it from Eastern?
Yes, yes.
That's right.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move that the Board award a one-year contract for Items Number 1, 3, and 5 on the Town of Carlisle's Fiscal 21 Bituminous Paving Bid to Newport Construction of Nashville, New Hampshire, renewable for two years at the sole discretion of the town.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What sort of things are, just out of curiosity here? 1, 3, and 5?
I don't have the bid sheet up in front of me, but it was, it was attached to the.
One is bituminous concrete, 3 is type 1.1.
So is this the material that they're doing? It's not like, it's a type of road or?
No, it's the, it's the, it's the type of material, yes.
Okay, just, I was just curious. All right.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
I move the Board award a one-year contract for Items Number 4 and Number 7 on the Town of Carlisle's Fiscal 21 Bituminous Paving Bid to Allied Paving of Chelmsford, Mass. Renewable for two years at the sole discretion of the town.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So has the tax thing been resol, been resolved?
Don't know. That, that's not, has nothing to do with the motion.
No, but, but.
Allies around, yeah.
Yeah.
Allies not there?
Yeah. No, I mean, they've done an excellent job, you know, with additional paving that they've done with the Rotary, but I, you know, I mean, it was, it was one of those things we, you know, have, has their case been resolved?
I don't believe so. I don't think it's gone to court yet.
No. So, I mean, I guess we award it and then it would have.
If they don't exist, we'll have to rebid it.
Yeah.
Well, they've, they've signed the certification with us that they're current with their state taxes. So you know, we assume that they, you know, they sign that under the pains of perjury. So they're telling us they paid their state taxes. So.
All right.
We'll rely on that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Motion, I move that the Board award a one-year contract for Items Number 2 and Number 8 on the Town of Carlisle's Fiscal 21 Bituminous Paving Bid to Brock's Industries of Drakeett, Mass. Renewable for two years at the sole discretion of the town.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Okay. I just wanted to ask Tim about the tiebreaker for Item 2.
Yes. Yeah, three, three companies bid $62 even for the same amount. So you're permitted to, to draw the names out of a hat in that case.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering what, what the tiger would be.
Or you flip a coin or pick the names out of a hat. Literally is the advice of the Attorney General's Office.
Very scientific.
All right.
All right. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Animal Control.
You, moving on, you see that Larry Sorley would like to step down as the backup animal control officer. He has a successor in mind, as he's indicated. Chief Fisher is agreeable to that arrangement if, unless the Board wants to solicit wider interest in the post or simply accept the ready-made solution to our problem.
I assume this fellow's qualified. I did read other things about it that seemed to indicate he was, yeah. And Larry would train him further if necessary.
Yeah.
Yes.
And he's the backup to, who is the?
Matt Svatek is, is the primary and Larry's the backup. It's, Matt, Matt does the bulk of it now, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Okay, we'll bring him forward at the next opportunity. Okay, moving forward, I met last week now with Bob Zog, talk about municipal aggregation and looking forward to a discussion with the Board at the next meeting in October on that. In advance of that meeting, some of the questions that Bob and Glenn and the Energy Task Force are interested in having the Board consider, and I've listed them here for you, you know, we now have two options to our, our consumers under the municipal aggregation with the Board. Consider a third option. And if so, you know, what types of energy suppliers would you be interested in? Would you like to keep the mix the same or would you be interested in different you know, suppliers of energy or non-renewable resources, et cetera? So just some things to think about before we have that conversation on the 13th.
Okay.
Okay, and also attached is a letter from the Metropolitan Planning Council requesting that the town appoint a representative to the council for a three-year term. We've sporadically had a representative to APC in the past, but need to have someone now.
There has to be a board member, correct?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does, okay.
And can you remind me what they do? I mean, I mean.
Yeah, there's a planning commission for the Boston Metropolitan area and we're, we're included in that. Our subregions, our subregion is Magic. You probably heard that.
I, I attend the Magic meetings.
Okay. Well, this is, this is. Okay, well, this is, this is the, the, sort of the parent body is MAPC, there are 101 communities in MAPC and MAGIC is one of their six or eight subregions. So.
What do they do?
It's two different, they do various planning studies, transportation, land use.
Does any of it have anything to do with us as far as you can?
Very little.
And how often do they meet?
I don't know that. I don't think it's monthly, but it might be quarterly.
Having said that, MAGIC has been very worthwhile. I mean, there's.
The sub-regional.
The sub-regional one because, you know, it's our, our neighbors, it's Sudbury and Bedford, Acton and Littleton and so it's been very nice to network with them and it's, and I can't, I really, I shouldn't have said that MAPC does a little, they do do things, but because they're a planning commission, a council, it's traditionally, it's been the planning board. It's unusual that I am, I'm unusual in going to the meetings as a selectman because it's mostly planning board members that go to this and, and town managers or, you know, PAs. And, and occasional. Blackman that go to those meetings because they mostly do planning.
Well, if you want, we can hold off on this and we'll get more information about who needs to be appointed.
You know, I can volunteer to do it since I'm doing the magic, I, you know.
All right, that'd be, that would solve the problem.
I'll just do it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Then the upcoming meetings were scheduled to meet on October 13th and 27th. The town meeting is on Saturday, the 17th. I'm just pointing out the possibility of adding a meeting, since we don't meet for three weeks now and we've got a town meeting coming up. I think what Jim mentioned earlier, the FinCom's meeting on, on the 8th, and that might be a meeting you want to go to anyway. Maybe we could have our own business meeting that night, if there was business, we could post the Board for the 8th and they could go to the, we'd go to the FinCom meeting and, and if we had something we needed to vote on, we could do it before that meeting or.
Seems reasonable, we could post it and we can cancel it if we need to.
Yes.
That's their public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so you're saying we would attend the public hearing and then go to a separate Zoom for a Board of Selectmen meeting if we needed it?
Or, yeah, or beforehand, I'm just thinking, why add another night, another night rather, you know, if you're out.
Yeah.
One night, do two things the same night.
Yeah, all right, so it's Thursday, all right.
Yeah, okay.
On, on previous TA reports and under the, you know, the upcoming meeting schedules, there was an item about town, school, you know, initiatives and it kept on sliding and, and now it's dropped all the way off, I don't see it at all. Are we going to have a report on that?
Yes, we are, I talked to Jim O'Shea, we, we had originally planned it to be this evening and with school starting, it just wasn't in the cards where, and Jim would like to come in on the 13th of October now. I didn't write that down, but we agreed to push it to the 13th.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on the Town Administrators Report? Thank you, Tim. Approval of minutes, oh, liaison report, sorry. I went to the Finance Committee meeting, but you already heard what went on there.
And I went to the facilities meeting and you've heard that we're doing the septic, the DPW.
I did go to the Council on Aging Board meeting, it was a couple of weeks ago, but again, you see the, you see the reports that they send out to everybody and so there was nothing, I really have nothing to add to that.
Yeah.
All right.
By the way, I will report back to the MFC and get a list, because I, I mean, even just, I'm thinking about, we have done a lot of things, you know, the new swipe cards at the police depart, at the fire department. You know, there, there's been a lot of things that have been done, but a lot of them are little ditzy things that, you know, they've got a new generator and.
It's good to have a list, though. Yeah, I think that's a great idea of what's been.
I will, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Get that list, is it, there's been a lot of things, lots of little things, lots of big things, there are a few big things. It's not like the Rotary, it's not, you know, it's like, little things that you don't notice.
Oh, did something happen in the Rotary?
No. No, and, and the thing is, they're all important things to do, right? You know, and, and I, I think it's really just, you know, us having the visibility into what's actually been done and, and, and also just, you know, I think it would be good to report it back to the top.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it, you know, it was neglected for a long time, you know, I mean, there are many boards that, oh, hey, we kept taxes down, yeah, but, you know, it bites you in the butt at some point and it's biting us now, you know? But, yeah, we, we have to just keep chipping away.
All right. Meeting approval from September 8th. Anybody have any corrections, additions? Complaints? They actually look pretty good, yeah. I didn't find any.
I submitted a few to Jen, I think she made them, right Jen?
Okay. You think they're already in here, probably?
Not, not in the published copy, but since the packet came out.
Okay.
They're minor, they're all minor.
Very good, yeah.
Jen, I don't know if you see her.
Take a motion to approve the minutes? Accept the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes as, as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Oscar Lillai.
Louis I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Thank you. Any further business?
You, you really, you, you got it in under the 10 o'clock hour.
It was tough, but we did it.
I don't know, there is some question there, Alan, certain points during that warrant discussions, but we did it.
Oh, well, what are you gonna do? All righty, thank you all, have a good evening. This was, this is, this was quite a meeting day. I had my first meeting at 4:30 this morning.
4:30?
4:30.
Yikes.
With, with Eastern Europe.
All right.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Sleep well, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Jen, thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night, Teddy.
Troy is still back there.